We're good to go. We're good to go. We're back from lunch.
I'm counting.
And we're moving to the staffing changes, I believe, in the agenda.
Eddie, when you are.
I'm sending it over to you guys.
Good, thanks so much. Hope everybody enjoyed their lunch. We did go.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, pretty, pretty good, wasn't it?
Very good.
Wanted to make sure you were fed for this part particularly. So, the twenty-five staffing changes, FY twenty-five staffing changes, you can see on your spring bear. These are now managed requests. Four of them. We'll take them in order briefly and then we'll open up the questions. So, and these are not in priority order below the first one. So, if we had to rank them, first one is priority one. And we did provide an answer to this in your packets. Priority one is the first bullet. And the other three are tied to two, very close second. On the human resources restructuring, we propose to reclassify the current HR coordinator to an HR director level, create the Department of Human Resources, and add one full-time employee, which would be an HR generalist. The total net increase you see on the screen is one hundred forty-eight thousand, including benefits. This hasn't come before people before because it's never made, made it beyond the cutting room floor with all of the priorities over the years. And it's one of those areas, I think, as some of us have discussed individually, that now is reaching critical mass. So, just to be clear, the entire town side of operations is currently managed by one full-time employee. And there is no Department of HR. It's essentially domicile in the town manager's office. And I'm happy to answer any questions on this before I move on. If you'd want to do it that way. It is really, really a challenge for the town. There's been a widening of mandates reporting compliance issues. But very fundamentally, the ability of adding function within town government to be responsive to our own employees is even now challenging, right? In the past, and one of your very good questions about operations in the town manager's office, particularly in the past, the idea was that the deputy town manager would assist the HR coordinator. We're proposing to restructure how the town manager's office handles things by taking on a greater workload that hopefully will be tied to this board's goals and objectives. So, just a minute on goals and objectives, I think, as you all know, your work together collaboratively with my office and staff on identifying your two-year goals and objectives for your term in office is on a parallel track with the budget, the budget approval process. So, we hope that as the budget is approved, and we've worked through the various levels of approvers, that what we emerge with is a budget that, at least from a funding perspective, addresses your goals and objectives. So, should've said that at the top. Anybody who would like to visit with our HR coordinator before you make a decision on this? We'd invite you to do that. Stop by Eric's office, have a conversation. Even more than that, we invite you to talk to your own town employees, the past majority, which I'm sure would confirm that, you know, this is a critical point in the operation. So, I think, you know, just to address a couple of questions. I've heard, well, you know, we haven't seen four position requests before, and four seems like a large number. Maybe that's true. As you'll see over the next twenty minutes or so, all four of these are mission critical, I think I described them as. And one or two of them have been deferred in the past. So, I'll stop there and just make sure everybody understands what we're proposing. The HR function would be moved out of the town manager's office. Don't ask me about the physical space yet. It's not going to be interesting when we come to it. But, you know, best practices in governance are not to have HR domicile in the CEO's office, right? I think everybody who's been on boards, you know, certainly in public companies and the public sector, you know, that this, it's not a, it's not a good situation, I think, in terms of its outward appearance. We are entering, will be entering later this year negotiations with all our unions. HR is gonna be an integral part of that. And I, you know, I won't say that it is the absolute busiest center in town operations. It isn't. But with one person sitting at that desk and no help, it's absolutely critical that we get this done. Do we want to have a deputy town manager continuing to do administrative work to help Eric? That's not ideal, especially as the town manager's office is taking on some of our shared objectives, be it housing or DEI or whatever we're doing over the next couple of years. So, I'll stop there. Any questions on the HR and the HR generalist or what we are asking for your support?
So, I'd just offer that, you know, some of these might be more discussion-worthy or controversial than others. Do we wanna hear all of the summaries first from the town manager before we comment on them? Or do we wanna comment on the one I want?
Whatever people prefer.
I'd be happy to do it sort of all at once and then we could sort of hear them in context and then.
Right, good.
Sure.
I agree.
Wendy's had her.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Item two, Town Hall Administrative Specialist. This is, it doesn't say up there, but I think everybody got the picture here. This would be a shared person, one FTE, shared between the assessor's office, the tax collector's office, and the town clerk's office. And that individual could also provide backup from time to time during busy seasons for the finance department. As I indicated in the supplemental memo that you've got on your desk and last night's email in response to one of the questions, two of the three divisions felt that they could justify one FTE on their own. And as part of the budget preparation process, when we met with division heads and department heads about, you know, what their real needs were, what came out of this was that all of the areas are challenged to continue to provide the highest level of customer service, that the public experience is threatened, and that the, most importantly, that the calendars of the individual divisions naturally lend themselves to a shared position. We think that this is the most cost-effective way to address a need that is shared by a good number of people. The last thing on this point is, they're all, at least those three divisions are public-facing. So, this is where our citizens and our public are. They're in this building, and they're not in engineering or planning. They're at the town clerk, or they're visiting the assessor's office or the tax collector's office. And this is where the bulk of that administrative work gets done. Again, at different times of the year, tax, you know, is January and July, for example, as we all know. And the constant work in assessment, taking things on and off, vehicles on and off, the granulus, for example. So, third, the mechanic driver is, repeats from prior years, at least one or two. And I'll invite you to speak on that.
Yeah, the mechanic driver would be in our highway department. It's a position where that person can either be a truck driver, plowing snow, that type of thing, or they could be in the shop as a mechanic. The mechanic is the place that we need the most help. When you look at the size of our fleet, not just public work, we take care of all of the vehicles at Town Hall, we take care of all of the police vehicles, we take care of all of the new electronics and things that come into town. This person would also help to maintain our facility. Industry standard, we should have four and a half mechanics, almost five. We have two-point-five mechanics. So, we also see the potential to share this as a resource to help the Board of Education. Board of Education has a number of vehicles that they outsource, essentially all of their maintenance on those vehicles. It's not cost-effective. The other thing that we would do is help them with their procurement of the vehicles. I think you could add a lot of value to it. The other thing that comes into play during snowstorms is this gives us one more driver. We have some of the longest plow routes in the region. So, our big trucks are covering thirteen miles is their responsibility. If we add this in, that's one more person to help with that task.
Thanks. And then lastly, on the police records clerk, I'd invite the chief to speak to that one. I think the police commission also addressed this board previously. But chief, go ahead.
Over the last several years, we've been looking to increase our records staffing. As, you know, there was a retirement back in twenty sixteen, and there was, that was a part-time position that hasn't been filled since then. Since that time, obviously, the need for the increase in records that we've had, it's just compounded over the years. We've asked for additional staffing for the last several years, which, when we've prioritized, you know, adding additional staffing, it kind of took a backseat to adding sworn officers. So, but that didn't alleviate the need for the records clerk position. So, you know, we've done our studies. We also, you know, looked at the service study, which we hired, which the board had commenced several years ago to look at the staffing analysis. They recommended adding two additional records clerks. Each, in looking at a performance measure standpoint, in as far as the qualifications and the hours it takes for each, each of the different functions that the records provides. Currently, we're running into a deficit of about eighteen-hundred hours of work each year that we don't have somebody in that position, which actually equates to about a full-time position, the amount of hours that would work. And it's also important to recognize that, because there's so many different things that they do, and, you know, getting, running the deficit and getting behind is just compounding things, right? I mean, so the, not having the adequate staffing, the amount of documents that, you know, aren't being purged is increasing, which is increasing our storage, you know, the amount of stores of records that we need to have stored. And then, you know, trying to have these things digitized to do it in a more organized and easy format to keep everything in, it's just, that's not getting done. So, all these things are compounding, the more and more that we don't have, you know, the adequate personnel to be able to handle these requests. So, we certainly don't want to, you know, continue on this path. We need to, we need to kind of get a hold of this. And right now, this is the priority right now is to get these records clerks.
Thanks, Chief. And we'll open up the questions on either of the four positions. Can we just go back and show the slide on the average taxpayer in that quarter? So, if you look at these numbers again, it was about four hundred thousand is the ask there. And I think that was it, just past it. So, a four hundred thousand dollar reduction in taxes for the average property owner is thirty-five bucks is the number envelope. So, with respect to the positions, while they might appear to be low-hanging fruit as we try to cut to a number that is, you know, manageable for our citizens, just ask you to keep in mind that this is the operations ask on the town side. The town represents roughly twenty-five percent of the total, and Board of Ed is seventy-five percent of the total. And that proportion has been roughly the same. Some minor changes over the last few years. The town's been squeezed just a little bit over the last three years, you know, as a proportion. But that's what we're talking about when we talk about those four positions. And then we'd also ask you to keep in the back of your mind the positions that didn't make it into the town manager's office, into our budget, right? So, there were cuts made before it came to you. So, with that, back to you.
Quick question. Came in, this was a couple of questions from some of us who were here two years ago, with respect to Kristen. Two years ago, we funded through ARPA a social worker position, and it was a two-year pilot that we wanted to bring back to the board that, if I, we watched it and we were all saying, we hope somebody remembers two years from now that this needs to come back to the board. I know that it's rolled into Mark's budget, but I think it should be a staffing position that we discuss. And maybe we discuss it when, later, when we can get some feedback from Kristen. But I think it should be, it should be, really, there's five positions, one, two, three, four. There's really a fifth position if people want to consider that. I know Heather asked a question in the poll, if other people want to have that included.
Good question. And just to clarify that it's not a new position in terms of the incumbent. It's been a town employee for two years. It's a new position that it was funded by ARPA and is now being asked. So, absolutely, we can get to that at any time.
Okay. I just wanna make sure people are okay with letting that be a discussion since that's what the intent was at the time.
You're talking about, do you wanna talk about it now then, with the role is?
Well, with the five, I think we should, I don't know, it's part of the five staffing positions. If we're looking at them, but I think we should start with these positions, right? Because we have black and white on these. That's what people want to do.
I see, yeah, I agree. I think it's something that we need to talk about and consider when we're weighing positions because it was formed as a temporary position and now it's just a line item in our budget.
And priorities too, if we do end up having to cut, you know, we go to the Board of Finance and the operating is still too high, or we decide on however of this, that's gonna be another piece that may, you guys may need to say, we need this more than this.
Understood.
Okay.
Question for clarification for actually the records clerk, because I think you had originally wanted two. So, now this is just funding one of them, correct? Okay. And I understand the need and amount of work that's being done. So, is this, is this any way offsetting? I mean, I agree that it, there's a significant need for it. Knowing that this job, is it not being done by someone else now? So, it's just kind of piling up, or are other people doing it? And then it, and then it's like going into some overtime pay that people are doing right now, and this offsets some of that overtime that we had discussed earlier? So, just clarify that.
Yeah, so, a lot of it's piling up.
Yeah.
And so, we have years of stuff that is, that is piling up in this.
I've seen it.
Yeah, you've seen it. And they've established a system that is working. It's not a great system. It's what they can work with. Like, for instance, checking to make sure somebody's criminal background, like the stuff that we have on a particular person. Instead of when that arrives from the court, instead of them going in right away and checking all of that, they put it on the pile behind them of stuff that has to get done for the last four years of those similar tasks. And then when somebody calls to request that particular topic, document, they then look and then they have to go to the pile and find that and make the changes and do that. So, they're doing it as they go through instead of doing it when is the best practice to do it right away. So, it's been piling up, to answer one part of your question. We have actually had some overtime too. So, especially during the influx of pistol permits, for example, we went from sixty-five one year to well over three hundred applications. And that has a statutory timeframe on it. It has to be in and out within eight weeks. So, they were working overtime for that. We've been trying to get the part-time position approved to work more hours. And we were able to work that through in, I think it was late January, through June thirty of this year. So, we tacked on more hours to try to get caught up on some of the work. So, it's kind of a two-part answer to your question. It's not all getting done, and we're still having a huge deficit. We have a significant physical storage issue in the entire police department. And this will be one way to get us through a few more years because we'll be able to digitize things and move things along much quicker than we've been able to.
Great. So, it sounds like we're talking about the police.
Yeah, you said any questions, so I'm doing that then.
Okay, so let's do the police clerk. Other questions on the police clerk?
Question for you. For the rate, is that just market rate? Are there different levels of a clerk?
So, so right now, we actually have three positions in there. And each are at a different grade. One is a records supervisor, one is a police records, right, one is a records clerk and one is a police clerk. And they all have, they all have different rates. We're looking for one at a police records clerk right now. And we actually put in, I believe, it was nine months of funding on that. But it's roughly forty-two thousand dollars is what it is. The other money in there must be the.
Full-ear.
All the benefits.
Oh, it's full-ear.
Yeah.
So, what, you said the salary, what is the salary of a records clerk that we would be looking for?
So, the nine, it's roughly fifty, fifty-two thousand a year.
That's like a mid.
But, but what was put in here is.
All the benefits.
Forty-two thousand, yeah.
Yeah, those are shown on the other, the administrative page, right? Well, I went to, I like Diana's question. Will we be able to reduce overtime if we fill this position? Overtime.
Overtime in records?
Well, in the, in the budget, the over.
No.
No? But do we, do we all?
Well, so, so, so one, one person will not, one person won't get us where we feel we need to be. It will significantly help us. So, like, we support the service report in that we need two full-time people in there. One is definitely gonna help us. And that just means that we're just gonna have to pace ourselves a little bit different and do, I guess, much more regular assessment of where we are and what our needs will be the next year. But it's gonna take a significant amount of work off of the existing work now, having one person there. It will not reduce.
Okay, and I actually wanted to refer to things we've heard in public audience. Are just the records people working on records? Just, I just have to ask that question.
I don't think the canine is, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. Yes, he doesn't do records.
Someone had the extra cookie, yeah, why?
So.
Public audience is gonna be interesting on Monday.
So, the answer is yes. They have a supervisor in there, but they also have oversight from one of the lieutenants, one of the commanders who has oversight over investigations, some administrative stuff, and then records. So, he has oversight. He's not handling the calls that come in for a copy of accident reports or anything else. That's all being handled by records. But if you look at records, records is documents that are being created. So, tied into that is also video and audio that we have. Records is not handling the distribution of that because there's a whole redaction process. So, when somebody asks for a copy of the dash camera, video coverage, and the body worn camera of, say, an incident where maybe three officers were at, and it was two hours, that's, quick math, twelve hours of watching. And to see what can be released and what can't be released because you don't want to release, you know, some personal medical information or, you know. Yeah, other, other things that would really violate somebody's, you know, privacy that we're allowed to redact and that we should redact. So, we have a lieutenant going through that, a different lieutenant going through that. But no, it's just, it's just records personnel.
Okay. I just had to ask the question.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
So, with regard to backlog, I don't, I don't discount the reality that you probably needed an additional records clerk. But addressing the backlog, is there an outside contracting agency or something that could help with that? Could you speak to that, please?
Sure. Yep, so we originally thought that would be the route to go, is to hire one of these many companies that are out there to come in, grab our records, digitize it, do all this stuff. And we started getting the quotes back from them. And it was much higher than we had thought. And we had looked at maybe a townwide project, and there wasn't enough interest for that. So, then we thought, like, how would we incorporate that into an efficient process moving forward for us? Instead of like a company coming in, doing, you know, two months' worth of work, clearing out some things, and then us, over the years, piling more up, this additional person, that would be one of the main functions is just, is to go through that. And so, we would purchase our own equipment for this and work with IT to have our own storage capabilities for this. And then develop the efficient way as we're going through. So, when an officer hands in the documents to records, then there's the scanning process, then there's the whole process of approving, getting rid of this because there's a whole process in and of itself on how to get rid of an actual original document, which is also very time-consuming. But then you don't have this sitting around with thousands of others. Instead, it's on the computer.
Does backlog get addressed in a certain number of years or time that you think of when we add this records clerk, or does it always stay there?
I would say it will, it will always stay there at one. We haven't been able to touch some of them for four or five years. So, once somebody is dedicated to doing that, we'll see how quick that goes through because that's not gonna be their own responsibility because there's timely things right now that, that need to be addressed. The stress level and workload on them right now. I mean, they're fantastic people and they're, they're doing as much as they possibly can to get things out. And they do a really good job prioritizing. So, somebody calls up and they were a victim of something, and they need a documentation either for court or for insurance, whatever it may be, like, they jump to the top of that. But somebody else who makes a request for a copy of an accident, it's an insurance company, they're just trying to subrogate and do whatever. It may take a week, it may take thirty days for them.
Have you ever been outside of compliance on the statutory requirements? Like the eight-week turnaround for that?
Absolutely. Yes, we have. And mostly not because of our fault. There was a time where the state was down because part of that process is getting information back from the state. Or we have, we have certainly been out of compliance for that. With the FOI process for requests for reports, we have to give them a timeframe. We have to respond within a certain amount of days. It doesn't mean we have to produce a document within that. And sometimes these documents are, like, it's months, six months, even longer out before we're able to produce this one. Depends on the level of request. I mean.
True. Thank you.
Just a question, just so we know going forward, because I hear the need for two, clearly. We fund one this year, will you be coming back next year asking for the additional one or to kind of see how this goes and we get through this?
Yeah, so I would say the latter, see how this goes and get through this because we do have, you know, we do have other needs too. We do have other staffing needs and we have, you know, we need, we need more police officers too. And that hasn't been asked for this year because we can't fill the current vacancies that we have for those. Like, it's a, it's a big struggle for us and has been for a little bit. So, we're hoping to sort of take that, that corner. And with reassessment of the records needs and where we are with our pool of applicants and vacancies, then we'll have to address that a bit next year.
I just wanna go back to the contractor. So, we, in the CNR, we have the digitization of this. And is that a product that we're buying or are we having a person that will work on it, like a software package that will turn it over back to us when we're updated?
Yes, no, no person. It's strictly storage, the computer IT-related storage to put all these documents. So, once they get scanned in.
So, the clerks will do the, use the pack, whatever the software is to do that?
Yeah, so we'll, so we will have the actual hardware, scanning dedicated for that because the regular home scanner or the scanner that's attached to our nice copier is not gonna be useful in this manner. There's, there are ones that are more so designed for this purpose. And so, it's calls for that hardware, software that may have to be purchased to go along with that. And then the storage devices, both on the network and backup for that. So, that's one portion of it, that's roughly twenty-five, five thousand. The sixty thousand in that other part of the project is for the renovations of our current records area where there are high-density storage units that roll plan carriages. So, creating a workspace there for that additional person and then using another section of our department where we have like file cabinets instead of high-density storage. Like, there's just file cabinets and stuff, like, all over the place. To have some high-density storage in there to use that much more efficiently through the process, getting rid of a lot of that stuff that we can. Just for an instance, like, we have to maintain personnel files thirty years after employment ends. So, we have, you know, we have those files on hand and we can make those digital and create some, you know, create some physical space in there. That's what the sixty, so it's not for a person at all.
Yeah, yeah. But I, one last question. If we hire, if we, if this passes and approves and we don't do the renovation, you have somewhere to put this person? I guess is the question. Okay.
I like that face.
It's all intertwined, yeah.
No, I get it, but I, you know, I don't know. So, the same, that'll help us.
Yeah, I mean, I'd love to have an extra place to put the person. You know, we looked at going to a different shift and, you know, sharing a workspace.
Yeah.
But then we don't have a records supervisor there for that. And it just adds to sort of other, other issues. It'd be nice, we already took space away last year from the current records in order to make an office for one of our commanders.
Thanks. Anybody wanna pick the next one?
I gotta admit, I'm curious. How, how did the forty-something thousand dollars baked in or fifty thousand for the records clerk get up to ninety-two? Because, I mean, I understand, you know, the pension and such, but that just seems like an eighty percent impact. Does anyone know?
Somebody, you know, has to.
Yeah.
It's probably healthcare, like, there are benefits.
Yeah, but eighty percent.
I think fifty percent.
Fifty percent or anything.
Oh, no, yeah, you're right.
Sixty-two.
It's sixty-two.
Either way, it seems dramatic.
I would I would I would budget out for like uh another thirty, like thirty-three percent for fringe and seventy-five.
It's about thirty grand for medical benefits.
Right.
There you go.
Okay, well, that's right there, the majority.
Right.
The rest is conscience.
And you did, you just also said already, there's no opportunity for a contractor answering Kevin's, just wanna have that.
There is, it's much more costly.
But but is it costly for the years that we need it versus forever? Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, so so that's not, um, the additional records clerk is not just to get rid of those, it's the actual processing of it. So that company that comes in, we have to give them something that's ready to to be shredded or 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 digitized and then shredded. It hasn't even been processed yet, that's what we need the records clerk to do is is to actually process that. So the company can come in, that's great, but we still don't have the the person doing the work to get it to that.
But there is no one that can come in and do the work?
That's that person. No, no, we can't, we can't hire a third person, no, no.
That's what I'm. There's no contracting for a police, there's no such thing as contracting for a police records clerk.
Not that I'm aware of.
It has to be a hired person with benefits.
Yes. Yeah, not that not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
There's there's so many things that 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 records clerk does, I can't imagine that there's a, you know, an HR company out there that that loads people.
I I think we'd be opening ourselves up to liability.
Police tend so well-served.
Union problem.
Yeah, it's a union problem, not a liability, I mean, there's sensitive documents that they're, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. So much, yeah. Very specific and specialized, like knowledge base.
Okay.
No, 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 no. Oh, um, Tom, I recall some of this from last year.
Yeah.
Um, what do you anticipate the shared aspect um of the mechanic driver of being able to also assist with? Um, the mechanic piece of some of the board of ed vehicles? Because I know they spend a considerable amount of money without sourcing that.
Yeah, that's correct. And uh, we had originally talked about it being where they would take a third of the price, so to speak, with this uh employee. Um, they were not able to accommodate that in their budget last year. And as this was discussed last year, we said we could still provide that service, just because in the overall scheme of things, it's in the best interest of the town. And in addition to providing the actual mechanic services, we would also be facilitating their fleet management practice, what vehicles they're buying, when they're replacing them. Helping them to make the right choices on their vehicles, but it could be approximately a third of this position.
Have they put in this year, do you know if Board of Ed has, is it kind of off the table for them again this year to?
It it, yeah.
To supplement it?
Right, so there, and and Amy could maybe talk to this, but when when one of their one of their vehicles fails, they bring it to one of the local repair shops to pay essentially the full price to have it repaired. In the event that something breaks during a snowstorm, we fix it, we just, we do what's right.
Right.
So we're talking about the mechanic driver now?
That's correct.
Okay. So I was just gonna bring up, I hate, I'm sorry, I keep saying last year, but um, this was one of the priority items that the board had to make decisions on last year. I mean, I I believe, right, it was ranked in there and um, we were, the Board of Finance had asked us to kind of float the open positions and determine what the need was when the the need arose. And at that time, the board decided to vote to to provide a position for Parks and Rec. But we, this one was this up at the top, it was four to two or three to three, whatever, this was up at the top. Um, so I just A, wanted to speak to the importance of this one in combination to everything else. I also wanna ask why we're only doing half and not the full year? Because it was a full-year position last year and it was critical last year.
So did you not pass it last year, I'm sorry?
So. It was voted no, they they opted to, the board pushed the other position ahead.
But the reasoning was not based on a need, the reasoning was based on, it's just sticky situation and we had to pick only one position.
Yeah. One, yeah, got it.
So.
Yeah.
It wasn't used, it was there.
Yeah, yes.
Uh, the the answer to the second question was this is funded for half a year? So it would not be an immediate hire, that's why it's uh fifty-one thousand.
So then would the?
So next year will be fully.
It would be full, the following year.
Yeah, so that's the other point.
That was good, so then that fifty would be in next year's budget to be approved, the additional cost of that.
The full, the full position in a year from now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So should we look at it, because are are we looking at any of these others as a delayed hire?
No, just this one.
Why this one, I just quite curious.
Recruitment and because the uh timing of everything else that's going on, we realistically don't believe that we'd be able to fill the position immediately anyway. If you look at the town's vacancy factor, it's been, which is also a subject that we could discuss, uh, you know, in further detail, I think. Uh, you can see there's uh, there's quite often a a a slowness to fill positions, particularly, you know, police, for example. Uh, so, you know, I just don't think that it's necessary to budget for the full year when you're making the ask for a new position. We wanna mitigate as much of the cost this year as we can. And and while, let me just make one other point, while it may be true, the grand list growth doesn't suddenly jump back up. The loss of the million five in motor vehicle revenue is a one-time hit. Okay, so even though this is proposed at fifty-one and it'll be a hundred next year, that's inconsequential to me when I look at the the position that we're in today. I couldn't make the ask for the full year, but I can justify the ask for the half a year. Um, it's it may not have been the past practice to budget for positions for a half a year. And my guess is is that the reason it wasn't is because the vacancy factor is helpful to have uh on the other side of the equation when you're looking to be able to have monies fall to the bottom line deliberately so that you can fund capital purchases next year. Uh, you know, the annual surpluses that you have, uh, even in the face of uh rising mill rates, I think all have to be considered uh before you cut a fifty-one thousand dollar position that has been asked before uh to a prior board and and wasn't even a unanimous denial. I I I think the board was split back then, is that right Heather, on this?
It was, but on it.
Right, so it it almost made it last year, to say we don't need it this year, um, so, so when do you?
But I think holistically, it's hard to, you can't really look at it as a fifty-one thousand dollar spend because it's not a one-off spend. So we have to, when we're considering the effects of next year's budget.
I would have, I would agree with you, I would agree with you, except for that motor vehicle argument. All things being equal, that's absolutely right, but but we know that you don't, you're not taking that hit. Right.
Kevin, did you have something, cause I.
I was gonna ask when you plan to advertise.
Uh, March. As soon as you pass. Oh, May, sorry.
Okay, and um, but for a half-year position?
Yep.
And so when would the position start if you're gonna advertise in May?
Half a year.
I'm just confused.
Do you? I don't know.
Am I, am I missing something? I I I'm sorry.
No, my 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 mistake, so.
Okay.
We would not fill the position until we had six months left of the funding, so.
Who, we have, Tom, do you have any input on this? Because it's your position, is your need immediate or is your need immediate for six months, just?
I I do have some, this is last year's book too.
Okay, okay.
So I have something that that I was able to find, it was still in last year's book.
Thank you.
Kinda not necessarily defends it, but it certainly quantifies.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Where, so this is, that's basically this is this has been evolving for probably four years.
He came with copies for every one of them.
That is.
He was like, I'm prepared.
Colors.
They're colors, too.
So then this is really just the mileage for for what we cover. This is the uh contributions for where a mechanic comes in. Um, there's there's things that are happening right now that that stink. There's times where the police department needs us to do something or ask us to do something and it's not necessarily a priority and gets tabled. Um, you know, these are things that it's not what we wanna do, but it's what we're, what's happening.
So.
So in bed, to to that point, it's it's in the town's best interest for us to manage their equipment.
Yep.
Make sure they're buying the right stuff, make sure it's being maintained the right way. It's just crazy not to.
So what would you say, but you, I I guess the question I'm asking is, should this be a full-year position? Considered as a full-year position? And I know Mark is at a half, and I I could say, we could potentially say that about other positions up here, I I mean, I.
There there was just a transfer within our department to uh buildings and grounds, uh, people, town hall staff, see it, it's Derek Olberg switched. He was our driving mechanic. We just um solicited and hired a new guy and it's only been with us less than a month, but it's been fantastic. So I think that possibly recruitment may be improving, I'm hoping. I historically, it's been uh problematic the past few years, having a CDL and some of the other requirements that that go along with it. Um, you know, did we just get lucky on this particular one or or what?
So I think, I think.
July first, I could put somebody to work and they'd be busy, I have a belief.
I think that's the the question is like, so you put out to hire in April, right? And you wind up finding a candidate right away, but we've only budgeted a half a year, so we're gonna, six months into their contract, be like, whoop, gotta let you go because we only budgeted for a six-month rather than a full-year salary, like how do you handle that?
I I I think the reality is the only reason, don't let me speak for you more, that that it was listed as a half-year position is just the budget implications that we have. We had a need for this last year, we had a need for this the year before.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not denying the need, I'm trying to figure out number-wise, like in the budget, like how you pay for it if you hire somebody.
Right. And as Kevin said, we we recently advertised for this the same position and we ended up getting a very good candidate. And it's working out great in in the first few weeks. And um, if if this was passed for a full years and and we advertised in May and we we got a good candidate, I think we would be certainly ready to keep them busy for the full year. It's just a question of, you know, the financial capability, can we can we do that?
So is it your thought, Mark, then, um, since we're only gonna fund it for part of a year, that they'd be ready for winter flower driving? And that's your thought and they would start up doing that work and?
Thanks for cleaning up that answer for me. I I actually looked at it upside down, I looked at it the other way and said, can can this wait a year? And and in which case, we'd be sitting here a year from now for the third time telling you the need and the answer was no. And then as Tom says, I just split the math and and said, look, let's uh, let's ask for a half a year and and be ready for winter. That that was the idea, but what you're hearing is, if if I I think, don't wanna speak for Tom, but they'd be happy to see you amend the budget and make it a full full-time position if that's it. The board is so inclined to to increase the expense side slightly here.
So then is this also like the police records clerks, that number include that's benefits, medicals? And so would then a full year be truly double that?
No.
Yeah.
It would be.
The way we budgeted for it, yeah.
The way we budgeted, yes.
Okay. All-inclusive of pension and and medical benefits, no, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, after the expenses, that's what it's gonna be.
Right, uh, for sure, right.
Forever, yeah, so so just playing ahead. Um, and then you you're, the, just have one more selling point for this position is we talk about the need for assets and keeping up with the assets, so we don't end up, this would definitely keep us up with the assets. Um, so we wouldn't have to end up spending more later for something.
One of the things that this position would be doing, the thing that I get just so nerdy and excited about is we spread salt, and the salt, every year I love telling people, it has rust inhibitors in it. It will cause anything made out of metal to rust. This is the type of position that once we decide it's spring, once we decide we're out of snow season, every single one of our big trucks needs to come in, go up on the lift, get cleaned thoroughly. And anything that has the slightest bit of rust, I want this person bringing it down to bare metal, priming and painting it so that our existing equipment stays in the best condition it can for as long as possible.
Any other questions on the on mechanic?
I'll find that.
I I just a definition, what is M R U? How does she, I I'm sorry for my name, you don't use that in the rest of it.
You don't use that in the rest of it.
Your answer, any of what?
It's a, it's a municipal computation of of a fleet. And it's, and as you can see, there's multiple different, um, every piece of equipment under the sun, whether it's a police vehicle, whether it's a police pursuit vehicle, whether it's a trailer, a dump truck, a pickup truck. And it's just a computation as to each one is given a value by, um, as to as to what that vehicle is. And it spits out that we need four-point-eight-five mechanics, and oh, by the way, that's two years ago. And the fleet has increased, uh, you know, just here in the town hall vehicles, uh, not to get specific with departments, but you know, the assessor has a couple of vehicles, there's more in the building department, there's. I I think that this list may be shortchanging us again a little bit, because again, it's it's, if it's printed, the print date's on it, it's a couple of years old. So so the fleet has only grown, technology is ridiculous, um, our fleet maintenance supervisor spends half his day either chasing parts or just doing the diagnostic work. Um, the easiest thing we did is we have a nineteen ninety-seven pickup truck to put a transmission in it in a day and a half. That's, you know, that's dropping everything out. It it, we've been working on a chipper, a brand-new chipper for five days, just trying to figure out what's going on with the diagnostics. Computers are are, I don't even change, I certainly don't change my wife's oil and and finding the dipsticks, another story, so.
But 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 this is also made here, you know, you think beyond just even the vehicles, every single one of our chainsaws, meat whackers, spring trimmers, backers.
So there's that. Uh, any other questions on any of these four?
I'm happy to keep it at the half, you know, year or whatever that you recommended, Mark. I I don't see any reason to increase it at this time, I, well, there are reasons, but uh, the budget's tough.
Yeah, it's a very tough budget.
I'm happy to talk about the HR department.
Sure.
Sure.
So, um, Mark, one of your main functions and and as our as our town manager is is um, dealing with the human resources function, it's part of it. Can you talk about, and you're obviously understandably short time here, um, the need for this restructuring now? You know, what um, employee needs aren't being served, uh, what are the areas that you hope would be improved kind of right away? And not only the elevation of that one role, but why you feel like there's another person unnecessary to add um, to deal with that function?
I'll do my best on it and and Eric is here as well in case I uh mess any of this up. But it's it's one of the roles in town government that's been expanding, it's it's kind of mission creep, you know, whether it's mandated compliance and reporting issues. Uh, or whether it's just the increased complexity of internal stakeholder requests for information like you're alluding to. Uh, but you know, if somebody wants to retire, they 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 have a lot of questions before they retire. Starting to see some, an uptick in retirement. Uh, post-COVID, in the pandemic, you've got a whole host of issues that uh we all as individuals have dealt with on the healthcare side. More people returning into to to getting medical attention and so forth. We are, as I mentioned before, uh, 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 union-heavy. We've got negotiations coming up with all of our unions uh that start this year. But from my perspective, and you know, I I share an office suite with uh with Eric, uh, the the workload is just extraordinary. And it it is an area where we need to at least get a generalist, but also work for automation. There are efficiencies that can be gained there uh in terms of automating and uh electronic, use of electronics and so forth. So we have, I think, a lot of work to do and this change would allow us to begin to do that, right? So as I mentioned before, there, the only administrative help for Eric is is essentially Tom or or myself even. And it is, when we get involved in it, it's not an area that um, our town taxpayers are are paying for efficiently at my salary or Tom's salary. This is an administrative backlog, similar to what the chief was describing uh downstairs in the police department. So, you know, I think Eric is doing a terrific job of prioritizing things that need to be prioritized. And because of that diligence, frankly, we're our own worst enemy. Because the 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 critical problems don't necessarily rise to the top. Because you've got one employee that is able to understand almost intuitively that this better be done today and that can wait till tomorrow. But that department, division currently handles OSHA compliance issues, is responsible for ensuring employee training in many cases, uh, and and the list is expansive. We were just drafting uh over the last week or so, a a a draft of the job description for HR director, and I'd be glad to email it to all of you when we're done here today. It's just a draft, uh, but when you look at, uh, you know, two and a half pages of duties, it 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 more specifically answers your question. So this is a restructure, it's not just adding a position. If we were just adding a position, we'd add the generalist. Uh, but we also realize from a governance perspective and from an organizational management perspective that HR should be a department. The HR, the person that is handling HR should have the status of a finance director or any of our other department heads. Because HR touches everything that the town, the town government does. Uh, and so there's a place for HR in almost everything we do, whether it's collective bargaining, whether it's frankly ensuring that our other department heads are meeting their goals and objectives as well, right? That is not just the duty of the town manager, but from a personnel standpoint, uh, it becomes a a a shared objective of the HR director. And then lastly, I would say that, you know, hopefully, and and, you know, I've been here long enough, I'm not saying this isn't done now, but you know, the the guidance and the coaching to all all of our employees. Uh, HR needs to have and does have an open-door policy where any anybody feels that they can. Uh H R needs to have and does have an open door policy where any anybody feels that they can go in there. And they're not walking into the town manager's office, right? I mean, there's there's that too, you know, where if you just look at the physical space, where is it? You know, it it's it's in my office. Uh and as we talked about, I think, in one of the other sections, you know, from a governance perspective, uh from a confidentiality perspective, right? There's HIPAA related things that are in H R. Uh just because the H R director or now coordinator reports to me doesn't mean that I automatically should have, you know, within earshot of every conversation that one of our employees wants to have. So we're looking at, you know, whether this is approved or not, relocating this uh outside of the town manager's office and putting some separation between us. But really what what I want as your new town manager and what I'm respectfully asking your support for is elevate the role and and put H R in there, you know, as a department head and and make sure that we are in compliance, that we're training our folks, that there is somebody else in this building that staff feel comfortable going to talk to if for any reason they don't wanna talk to the town manager. Uh and bigger organizations, as we said before, have this separation between their C E O and their H R director. But the generalist is an administrative role uh within the human resources department that can much more quickly respond to employee needs, much more quickly to uh intergovernmental requests or requests from our healthcare uh insurers or any of them. So uh it's it's something too that it 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 hasn't risen to this level yet. But if this continues, you're putting the organization at risk of of fines, compliance issues, uh employee dissatisfaction. There's been a lot of communication between us about employee morale uh in other contexts. But you know, if you ask any of the town employees, they're all gonna say that the incumbent is doing a fantastic job, but needs help. And I'm here to ask you to 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 support that. So I hope that answers your question.
It's a very compelling mark and I and I appreciate that and I I haven't heard any any complaints about performance, certainly here nor would I necessarily think that I I would, but I part of the source of my main question was one of your main functions as town manager. How do you feel like you're not able to accomplish those functions, the H R functions related to being town manager? And why it would need to be separated from your role in order to 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 solve all the other things you talked about, compliance and otherwise?
I think because the charter's wrong with respect to this issue, the 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 town manager really shouldn't be the personnel that, you know, I mean, I'm the appointing authority and and I sign the forms and I get that. Uh but there definitely needs to be, in my view, a an intervening role. I'm I'm the town manager. I'm not a personnel director, right? I'm I'm not an H R director. At the end of the day, I I am uh uh the buck stops at my desk, subject to to this board. Uh and so this board is our governance board and you've got a town manager. Uh and and I'm responsible for the management of the entire organization without an H R director? Or maybe I should do it with just a personnel coordinator, who by the way, doesn't even have an admin? How is it even possible? My question to prior uh folks who've been here a lot longer, how was this done in the past for so long? Because it's it's uh I I think what's happened is there's been a Band-Aid approach to this. Uh you know, there's been some who have said, well, we were told in the past that the deputy town manager would 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 lend a hand. And maybe that's true. Uh but it's um it's pretty, it it's a pretty dire need, as you can tell.
Yeah, so I'd like to weigh in on this. I mean, um so this is, I don't know if Heather will, th- this is, this came up last year and you know, this is how our the prior town manager structured the department, which is they're they're prerogative to do that um as a personnel director, um with um Tom helping and Eric helping also. Um I I personally believe that this should be a separate function um for town staff to have a place to go without walking into the town manager's office for personnel issues. Um that that's just something that I saw as aware of in in my last term here. Um and I do think um Eric, and and whether it's done through this or done through later, you know, should have an elevated role. Um uh the other thing I was gonna say is the personnel director, which is the town manager, is a personnel director, not necessar- is there a line between personnel and H R? But aren't you involved with the labor negotiations and things like that, which you still will be? And one thing I would ask too, if that is your function, do we get to reduce some of the labor costs because we're we're looking for the new labor attorney? Uh I think we did bump it up a little. Maybe we bumped that down to offset some of the costs because you're saying you're gonna handle it. Um and the new labor attorney, you you think you can handle some of that work? So maybe we we bump some of that down um in the budget.
I'd be happy to talk about that. I mean, I I'm I'm I I just caution us that while I have the H R background, former union president, been around a long time, the position of town manager typically doesn't.
Okay.
And and so while you may be able to make some adjustments, like, you know, I frankly, and for the record, I'm not a lawyer. But probably a good part of what our labor lawyer does, I could handle. The question is whether I should be doing it. And and whether that is, whether you as the governance board think that's the best use of my time. And there's a lot of things that I could do pretty well, frankly, but uh but probably not what I should be doing. And that's the same argument we're making when we say the deputy town manager really shouldn't be helping the personnel director, you know, with surveys and 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 things like that when I need him uh at my side to handle your goals and objectives, right? So when we move D E I uh from and 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 try to elevate that from from social services and and put it over in the town manager's office, or when I take on, I wanna work with you, uh the new housing committee, things like that. These are things that are now being moved into or absorbed into your town manager's office so that I'm doing with the help of my staff what you're directing us to do. And you haven't directed me to tell my deputy to help Eric. You never made that decision. If you make that decision, that's what I'm gonna do. But it's probably not what you wanna do, given your goals and objectives and what you want me to do, if that makes any sense.
This is tough for me because um I think that some of the things you described are are absolutely important priorities for us. But I would split the importance of the policy boards and the elected uh political function uh in uh working through some of the strategy goals and uh the necessary internal operations and administrative function related to the town manager and the town manager's office. And I think that the confidentiality and the other structural issues that you mentioned, both proximity um and access uh could be dealt with through a lot of other, a lot of other means. Move the office, like you said, establish office hours in another part of the building or like everybody does, could I meet with you for thirty minutes somewhere? So uh I don't know that the availability there is on the full schedule and all that, but it seems like there's lots of ways to slice that. Um and it it's a really tough year, um you know, Mark, and I know that you've heard this a dozen times, you've tried to prepare a budget for us. But this one is is really hard for me, not because I don't trust your opinion on this, but it is um a significant change from what my understanding and expectation would be from the town manager form of government, which actually was a a a good selling point uh when we would have the entire H R function performed by an elected first electman. And now we brought in uh uh expert, you know, uh a town manager uh to perform that function that isn't an elected official. So that's where I'm sitting on this and still still struggling.
I and that that's a good point. I I would just want wanna weigh in. One of my hesitations with this is, I mean, I li- I like the concept, obviously, that's the the bottom line is the issue. Um but we're doing that comp and classification study and I think you referenced it in the other position, but we still don't know what other people are doing in relation to H R. And I think a lot of this would determine, anything that would come off of, say, the deputy town manager's job or someone else's job as a task that they're doing today would roll into this generalist position. And that would be a better way to come up with a job description for what this person's gonna do. Um maybe it is, you know, a down the down the line kind of thing, but that comp and classification study is one of the things that is holding me up. Um the other thing that I would like to point out just for, there's nothing on here for this, I look at the H R department, no offense Eric. When we talked to Gov H R and they were coming in, I think there's a lot of technology improvements that could happen in that office. Because when we talked to Gov H R about the comp and classification study and we asked what kind of system are the classifications for the positions on and they said they're in Excel, is there a package or a tool that we could get that could ramp up some of the work that's done on paper in the H R department and make it more automated? And I don't know if there's any sort of evaluation that we can do or or do, you know, obviously cannot really, but something to evaluate what's out there that might make the job easier for Eric and a generalist.
So both both great questions. I think I'll take the second one first. In order to do that, you kind of need to do this, right? Because you're not gonna get our current incumbent to do anything more than he's doing right now. So if you want him to conduct the analysis and and potentially make recommendations for the technology upgrades that we, I agree with you, are probably there, uh you need to make this restructure happen so that his role is moved out of the administrative, I'm moving this file over here and I'm meeting with ten people a day and all of the things that he currently does. And 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 let him have a higher level approach to managing. It it's not a department at the moment. It's 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 one person. You've got a personnel person. That's what you've got running the entire organization. I agree with you. You need to take him out uh and move. With respect to the first question, which is, I think, an easier one, the we are drafting the job description for the director. We're asking Gov H R as part of the classification study to A, uh make sure that 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 other similarly situated towns have at least one admin working in the function, right? We we already know that's true, but we've asked them to opine on that. And then they will uh give us the job description uh that that best meets that generalist. So we're working on the draft of the H R director because internally, I wanna have my fingerprints on what exactly we want that position to do. And as I said, I can email it to anybody who wants it, the draft. Uh but we are, to your point, Wendy, we are using Gov H R, we are using the classification study. If you don't approve this now, we're sitting here a year from now asking for it? When we already know that we've deferred eighteen other requests that you're also gonna hear about? I I mean, you see the the waterfall, the cascade of of things. So really, the 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 from where I sit, if you've got, this is the third or second request for the mechanic driver, uh we can nix this and we'll be back here next year asking for it if we make it that that far. But what other competing interests will be here then? What you've got is the top four right now. And yes, it's a tough budget year, but there are capital reserves available to use. It's not necessary to forego any of these four positions, in my view.
Well, that's what, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
So I guess one of my questions that, you know, you mentioned um different goals, which we haven't actually solidified those yet, but it seems like we could get more creative with, you know, maybe not having maybe D E I run out of a different group rather than town manager's office or certain things like that. Like if those decisions make us need a full new hire, then I would rather get more creative with those decisions than hire someone for hundred fifty thousand dollars.
So it's not that work that's making the hire necessary. The hire is necessary because of the piles of work that are already there, similar to the records clerk, right? So bifurcate those two things. However, the Band-Aid approach of letting the deputy manager lend a hand increasingly to H R was not a decision that was made by this board, really. It was a, I guess, a solution of last resort that was never put in front of it. If if you want that to continue, that then then that affects the things that I'm I'm able to absorb, which frankly, I think should be done uh more properly if they if they directly link to your goals and objectives, then they should not, with respect to my colleagues, be out in at the library or in social services or wherever. But your goals and objectives are managed top down from the town manager's office. Uh and and that's how we can all hope that they're achieved. They need to be funded and they need to be managed, uh not spread out throughout the entire organization. So for that reason, uh you know, I I recommend it to, you know, taking on more of more of the things that were related to your goals.
So it was my understanding when um we created the budget director role and um I did ask this question, which you you did address, but
Yep.
Um that then in Tom was in the interim position, that when we looked to hire a a deputy and when we look for different town management positions, that we look for certain skill sets. And I recalled that one in looking for deputy was going to have um an H R component, especially with the budget director um tasks being taken off of that position and and into the new budget director role um for the budget task. So I guess my question, is that is that not how towns operate? I mean, H R is fully off of the town management, wanting to get town managers and um.
So so the the again, that's a two-pronged question. I think with respect to the decision to create the the budget director position, there there were a number, let's say four or five, really good reasons why that needed to be done. It was a high priority at the time. I think sitting here today, uh you know, I I can certainly tell you that I can't imagine that it hadn't been done. So to anybody who made that decision, who approved that decision, uh you know, I I I compliment you for your role in that. Unfortunately, what happened was when the position was justified, somebody made the additional pitch that, oh, by the way, if you do this, uh the deputy town manager will have a little less to do and therefore he or she can help H R. You know, it was unnecessary to make the pitch and I'm trying to resist making the same mistake here on these four S. We we so desperately want them that we throw everything up, you know, against the wall and see what it'll do. I'm gonna give you every reason under the sun why you should do this. But and and that's fine, but some of them are better than others. With respect to the creation of the budget director position, you should not have been told under any circumstance that that this is somehow going to free up a deputy's job so that he can be essentially a clerk to a personnel person, you know. That that I would not have said that to you at the time and I can't speak to that.
So I just wanna, I mean, Tom and and even Melissa, in in the past, and I I thought um Tom, Eric and Maria did all personnel before we created the budget director position. So it wasn't just as a result of that, it was just that it would enhance the time to do the role, right? I mean, and I don't know if Melissa, if you were involved in personnel too when you were a deputy, but it was a function before the position as of the deputy's role. So we're we're saying that that will come out of the deputy's role, will go into this generalist role and that we will fill the deputy's role with higher priorities for the town manager's office. That's what I'm hearing you say.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so one thing, I was just gonna go back to this too, talking about the I T and the trans- the technology, which is one of our goals, which we haven't approved yet, but it is on the list. Um so one of the other things that the the budget director promised for the deputy's role was more technology, I believe. Cause Melissa used, the deputy town manager used to, used to run the I T department. I don't know who runs I T department anymore. Okay, so Tom runs I T department. So so.
Eric does.
I supervise, right?
Eric, okay. So so in that respect, if we're talking about the look and need for new technology in that department, we do have people that could do that and not put it on Eric, correct? We have people that are experienced in personnel to potentially know what's going on there, to look at other. I'm just saying, it it could be somebody else looking.
Look, I think I think we're, it's a distinction, if I can take this. It it it's a distinction without a difference. One of your primary goals is gonna be economic development. That's gonna fall, unless you wanna hire an economic development director, it's gonna fall to the town manager and the deputy town manager.
Okay.
And we've spent a lot of time talking about zero grandless growth. And even though we haven't, you know, published the the final goals and objectives yet, it it, you know, we're, we wanna work in partnership and collaboration with you on those. Economic development is not domiciled, you know, currently in I T or with the budget director. So, you know, as your town manager, I need my deputy town manager to be working on the things that we collectively are working on, not spread out between I T, personnel, you know, all of that. So, yeah.
Okay.
Um well, I guess that begs a question a little bit of, so is the skill set? Um you know, I with every town manager and deputy town manager comes a different skill set and background. And is the skill set um Tom or um yourself more in economic development or personnel? Because maybe it's better to consider an economic development person than an H R person? You know, do we have, do we have a deck um on our town that we can go after certain types of businesses? Do we have uh, you know, our play, our position set up? And what are our goals under econ- um economic development to actually grow the grand list?
I think Heather, you that these are act- acts, I think we've got an agenda item here. At the end, policy discussion and wrap up, which is exactly where you're going. How this all comes together are your high level questions. But if you don't mind holding that one till the policy discussion at the end, because you you're absolutely right. There's trade offs here. But what I can tell you is is that it makes no sense at all to have the deputy town manager trying to lend a hand in H R. It makes even less sense to have H R domiciled in the town manager's office and for a number of reasons, uh shit now.
I was gonna just add that I see, for me, I I view it because I I do have some of an H R background. Um and I think there's a difference between town personnel and H R. And I think separating them is actually valuable to us. And I think separating them is actually valuable to us. Because there's one thing to do contract negotiations when it regarding personnel um and and town employees or benefits packaging. But then human resources, um, is is the interpersonal uh division that. You shouldn't be involved in necessarily on a town manager level, that the HR should have director. Um, handling overseeing all management and 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 uh from that kind of per, you know. It's different than the contract, because I see what you're saying. Um, and but I don't, I agree that I don't think that HR to that level. I mean, say for example, I'm gonna just throw this out there as an example, Tom Fitzgerald has a problem with the town manager. Who's he supposed to go to?
It's in the, it's in the policy.
No, I know it's in the policy, but it's hard when he's sitting there in the town manager's office, like. You know what I'm saying, like, I think it's like the separation of powers in many ways.
Yeah.
So I I think there's a grievance process.
Yes.
There is a policy in place and that's a serious issue that this board invested would be made aware of.
Right, right, I was just giving that as an example, it's not happening.
And that's, and for me, that's how I walk walk through that that scenario. Um, and so I also, um, and I'll respectfully disagree with the premise, uh, that the deputy town manager would be somehow administratively supporting the HR function. You are the personnel, uh, head of head of personnel. You have created a a role that functions as your HR coordinator to perform those functions, that are the administrative functions. And that entire office that you have, uh, from the town manager's office that already has access to all these personal records and and information as well, are supporting you. In dealing with that function, it's not that it's overworked on here, it's it's your delegated responsibility as a town manager. Uh, to perform the human resources function and that's how I've been envisioning this. And I think that we may just be disagreeing or looking at it from a different perspective.
I think we're saying the same thing, a- a- actually, I think, you know, but but take police for example. By all accounts, everything is going well, public safety is good, well managed, wonderful team. But the work is piling up on the record side and it's been piling up for years. Even though I am the personnel director, the work is piling up, you know, not not the highest priority. But we're only able to get this done because of choices that are made every day by one individual. Am I gonna do this or am I gonna do that? So far, those choices have been right. But to your point, uh, Swatman, I don't think that anybody expects me as the personnel director to be managing Eric's role to the point that. You know, every decision that's that's made with respect to prioritization, I'm not in that loop. That's his role and it's reaching critical mass when you have employees that are waiting through no fault of of his. For, you know, answers to questions, right? We it's about our internal service ability. We worry about our external service to our customers, our our citizens, our taxpayers. But inside this building, the town manager's office is responsible to make sure with your help and approval. We have the resources we need to do the job and that imply that that in includes clearly servicing our internal stakeholders, which is every one of our employees. And if you, just after this meeting, I invite you to take a a walk down to Eric's office and and just have a conversation.
She's like, sure.
But uh. So I think the most important part of this entire conversation is making sure that the town employees are taken care of well. Um, so we're in full agreement on on that and setting up a structure and the resourcing, uh, that makes that possible. Um, but I also wanna uh be a good um responsible steward of the taxpayers' dollars here. And structuring an environment that um not only um the residents and the employees um would want, but something that we can afford. I'm having trouble with this, Mark, still, so I look forward to continuing the conversation.
Thanks very much.
I was gonna say, we all, you know, it's all gonna come down to, you know, how how much we can impose on our taxpayers this year. What do we need to impose on the taxpayers this year to make any of these decisions, right? Like, what is the, that that's all.
Right, and we may have to decide a project versus people, like, are we gonna hire people, are we gonna get a project done, I don't know.
Yeah, so that's that's the.
So we didn't discuss really the administrative discussions, though.
No, we did not, yeah.
Um, but.
There is a memo on your desk, though, just in the interest of time, uh, we we circulated that.
I still want to forget about it.
And um happy to take any questions on that, uh.
I have a short one, um, uh, it's from the registrars, they they increased their budget quite a bit because of the. Um, the mandates and early voting and all that, and that's reference here from the town town clerk's office. Does this, uh, you know, role change any of those estimates for what they need either part-time or or any of that?
Doesn't doesn't help cut them, but it 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 it, we took that into account and ask you for the position.
It's nice, okay, I have no other questions.
No, great question.
I have a question, um, it it sounds like it's gone from four departments to three departments for support.
The three priorities are the are those, uh, uh, tax assessment and town clerk. To the extent there was any excess capacity, finances is obviously. But, you know, the point is, is that it's a shared position, uh, where, as I said at the top, two of the three, you know, feel that they could justify and ask for for a YFT on their own. Given their current workloads and state of affairs, so, uh, yeah, I hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, I'm okay, as long as it's for those three departments, because I know I can see all the need and I know that um the assessor's office has a. Has a strong need, the tax collector has a, I think, a seasonal need, as does the town clerk's office, who does bring in roughness and permits. Um, the the finance piece I do have a question on, because the finance department right now is split with the BOA, most of the work done there. So I don't see how we can use a part, um, a piece of a person that we are paying for for the finance department. And maybe you could address that, but I don't know how you separate that work from overflow work that may be offset because we're doing BOE work.
It's not an overflow because we're doing BOE work. Um, there was a shift in adjustment when Melissa took over the position up there. But the intention and always has been the intention is that the tax collector's office would become a revenue collection office. So you're not paying people high level dollars to take in money and input the journal entry, basically. And if you look at the job description for, I think it was the revenue technician, when that job description was changed, it was with that intent for it to become a revenue collection office. We just can't do that with one point eight people. So essentially, the money that's coming into finance would now go into the tax collector's office as anticipated and that's the offset to finance.
Okay, so that's just for the town?
It's just town.
Just town.
Okay, so that's that was my only concern with the position under finance.
Good question.
That's a plan for that position. Um, all right, and so the the social worker position, I don't, do we wanna talk about that now or do we wanna talk about that with the department?
I'll ask Kristin to come up and, uh, if you're prepared to chat about that and 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 if you've, if board members have any other questions besides that on uh social services, we'll have.
So there were questions in the questions.
Oh, I said it was pending.
To pending, so would we hear about the the justification for the position now, I guess?
Uh, yes, and for the benefit of those watching at home and those who don't know, the discussion that we're about to get into involves. Uh, one full-time uh employee in Kristin's department, who was uh originally funded under a two-year pilot. A poor revise, uh, former board of Swatman and board of finance in a prior budget, using ARPA money. Uh, the ARPA money is exhausted and so the the question is, uh, justifying uh the position and actually getting some report from Kristin on. Uh, the results of the pilot, I think that's kinda where we're going.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Is there any specific question that you would like me to answer for you first? Or would you like me to give you an overview of the things that we've done?
Do we have any information on, like, cause I wasn't here before, what position actually does? Let's do that, start.
Yeah, why don't you start with that, you give them a position overview.
Uh, so when we uh first looked at adding this position, um, the intention is for a youth and family social worker. And that social worker works specifically with our youth and families in town. Um, they are responsible for administering our youth service bureau grant dollars from the state of Connecticut. They are responsible for um running and coordinating our youth service bureau. And um they also work closely with me on coordinating our juvenile review board, which are encouraged. And um also in the fourth prong of this is our youth therapy referrals. Um, so those are the four main functions of that position. Um, and also, of course, they are a social worker and a a good steward to the office, um, and giving us another person, cause we've all been talking about the need for uh people. Um, and this position, we um was funded two years ago through ARPA dollars, through the budget process. We onboarded the social worker late in October of that year, so she's just finishing up, um, being with us for about sixteen months. So I just wanted to have you bear that in mind when we look at what's been done, because it really hasn't been for uh two years. And some of the that beginning time was just onboarding her and getting her up and running as a municipal social worker and a town employee. Um, one of the main things that we wanted to accomplish with this position was, as I first said, the management of our youth service bureau dollars. Before we added this position and before we added our community social work position, two years prior. The youth service bureau was managed only by the director in the office. Um, and as you can imagine, not a lot of hours to lend to that position to coordinate programming. Um, so traditionally and historically, what the department did was to then um. Provide those dollars out as further grants to other entities within town. So rather than social services having its own programming under the youth service bureau, we would give money to the schools, we would send money to the library, we would give money to. Culture, proximity, recreation, um, and that's how we would spend our funding and and police department as well. Um, sorry, no money for you, Tom. Uh, so since then, we've been able to um create a great number of programs in-house. We love the fact that we have um kiddos and families coming into Eden Memorial Hall. Um, our staff love it, our seniors have loved it, um, it's been really great for the building, it's given us a little bit of new life. Um, to date, we have offered fifty youth programs. Um, so those are programs designed to um enhance our youth's experiences, to provide uh positive reinforcement opportunities. Intergenerational opportunities, um, and chances for parents and families to have a nice time together. Some of those programs, um, have included um babysitting courses, so we've brought our youth in and we've certified them um as babysitters. We have um taught fire safety. We have um held several sensory events, sensory friendly events. So those are our events where we are mindful of um our folks who may have a disability or may um need adjustments to sensory input. And those have been going really well. Um, we have also done um a lot of like more fun things, we've got craft clubs, um, we have a cooking class that meets weekly, which has been really fantastic. Um, we've had a lot of family programming, we've had fifteen different um family events, including tie-dye events, um, a magic show. A very popular pet CPR class, um, some bingo classes and things of that nature. Um, and we also have successfully helped two parenting programs. Um, right now, we are finishing up our first eight-week course of a parenting class, um, and that's been going really well. So we had a set of parents that signed up to come in and meet with a parent educator weekly for eight weeks, uh, which is, I think, huge. That's one of the things that we want to get to do more of. Um, when I asked the current social worker, the incumbent, what she would like to do next to add on to these things. Um, two things that we would like to do that's in our ask for the budget is to send her for two very specific training classes. Where she would then be certified to run a support group for both our um teen boys and our teen girls. Um, and and other gender um choices. I didn't say that as well as I could have, sorry. Um, we also have uh seen better support with our juvenile review board cases. Um, these cases typically were just managed by myself and part of what we are mandated to do is a set of scales. Um, before the juvenile comes to their hearing with themselves, as well as their parent or guardian, and a set of scales post their experience. And what we should see is um a reduction in some of the behaviors. And um we've been able to successfully do that with this social worker and we're also able to provide more case management to these families. Um, so rather than, okay, you came to juvenile review board, that's great, check it off the list, I did my hours, I'm done. Now they're actually meeting with the social worker beforehand throughout the process and at the conclusion. Uh, so she's able to give them resources and services and hopefully make it a more meaningful experience. Um, we're also continuing our youth therapy program. Um, to date, we've made sixteen referrals to our outside contracted therapists. Um, and those are for issues around parenting issues, family issues, school-based issues, um, and our social emotional needs. So those are uh some of the things that we've accomplished in these past sixteen months. Um, I think it's gone very well, I think that we've accomplished um a good amount of what we set out to do. Um, and I think that we have good plans moving forward, um, hoping that this position continues. Um, and to also reflect something that was done in this time, um, the department worked closely with um the state Department of Children and Families. Um, we recently started a new data system for collecting our youth service bureau data. Um, so that actually was just implemented last month. Um, so moving forward with the state, we will have a new set of data.
So do you have any current data? I know at the time when the position was created, we had asked for specific data for when the state came and also, um, at the time, we discussed. Um, there were significant increases that you had in youth issues and the severity of the issues. And I'm curious what we're looking at today and those sort of numbers and I don't know, I I know you presented a little on that as well last time, two thousand twenty-two, I don't know.
Um, I would say that it definitely has leveled back off. Um, we have had uh six JRV cases, which is back closer to our normal amount. Um, but the intensity of the cases hasn't changed. So I would say like the things that the kids are getting in trouble for are still like just as intense. Um, it's not typical to have larceny and break-ins and those are the things that we're seeing with our youth kind of.
Yeah, and our options as a as a police department have been extremely limited now. So so if maybe six years ago, something that we felt was necessary for a child to go before juvenile court with. And could not do the JRV, the courts are not interested in that anymore. So we are being, uh, you know, rejected as that being an option much more often than not. So if the numbers are leveling off now, if we see an increase in even uh some minor offenses. That in the past would go to the court, now we're gonna be going to uh the JRV.
Correct, and we have actually had our first um duplicate case. We've had our first instance of a a youth offender coming back to us. Um, I think that was actually one of Chris's first years.
So another um concern at the time was um issues on half-days with students are vandalizing. Um, and kind of getting into trouble around town and the intention was to have a program during those days. Um, what what sort of participation have you seen in that and has that vandalism decreased?
So we've had um, we've had good participation with that and I'll also reflect with the library. We're still um working with um the librarian on those programs, as well as having programs in our building. Um, and we've also, during the nice weather, um, after school some of the days, our social worker has put out lawn games on the front of Eno. And snacks and she'll just go and like hang out, hey, stop by here, play some cornhole. Um, so I think that has been effective, what.
Yeah, and so as far as van- uh vandalism goes, it it kinda does this, you know, and I know that that Tom Traverski spoke earlier about Rotary Park coming down the line. And that was a big source of of a lot of issues at one point. We're still always gonna have the the kids coming down. We definitely don't have the resources with the numbers that we have to contribute a whole lot to that. Um, I think to protect our assets, we have to look at a variety of things and we didn't want a police officer, you know, stationed at Rotary Park. It's just not really what we, how we wanna spend the resources. Um, but I think that even though we may have sort of leveled off, I don't recall many complaints coming through, like in the last few months anyways, about vandalism. Uh, they still may have, I just I just don't recall those. We may see uh an uptick in those, from the nice weather, uh, early, early part of summer. Kinda does one of these.
So Kristin, do you have exact numbers of participation in the programs of our residents?
Um, I've got, so I have exact numbers for several of our programs. Um, is there one in particular that you would like me to give you or just as an example?
Are these, are those all the programs that we have, can we get copies of that?
Sure.
That would be helpful, we did like to get that before.
Was it open?
Oh, we don't, yeah, oh, you can.
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to share. Yeah, I'd be more than happy to share that with you. Thank you, Tom. It's, one of them is uh besides.
You know, I will make a a note um to both of your points of uh, cause I I know this from um the disability standpoint, but also from school standpoint, that behaviors in general since COVID and going and coming out of it are at an all-time high. And I know that has not reduced yet. Um, and I don't know whether they will or not, but I know in schools that they're seeing higher levels of behavior and the intensity of those behaviors are high, high, high since COVID. Um, and it's affecting the library, it's affecting police, it's affecting, you know, it's affecting town parks. Um, and I I'm thinking that the the resources putting into this social worker is helping to offset. Even though you're seeing maybe a reduction in the number of cases, the intensity is still there. So the more programming, um a- and I know at the last Youth Services Advisory Board meeting, we had talked in conjunction with the library and Parks and Rec about some of those, that half-day schools, especially as the weather gets nicer, um when they have school half-days, that it's a real problem. And the businesses downtown um are, you know, have a lot of complaints and worries. Boy, do we read about it on Sims Barred Neighbor Tonight, um or all the Facebook pages. So the resources that the social worker um has would be helping to offset some of that. You're not gonna reach all of them, cause some of the kids are gonna be problems no matter what kind of programs we do. But I'm just making kind of a note just for the general public to say that I know that um the intensity of behaviors are as high. And even though that the, like you said, the the case may be down, the intensity isn't necessarily down. So what can you do potentially that uh is the next step to address the intensity of those behaviors? Because some of, some of them are seeing it in special services within the school district and their case, you know, from a special services in the school standpoint, um their numbers are going up because of this, so you know, how how can we help address that?
And I think we are already doing a couple of things and certainly um open to ideas of how to do more. Um, one of the things that has been nice and I would reflect back on what you said is that the schools are still really struggling. And uh the current staff has done a really good job of growing her relationship with the school's social workers. Uh, one of the things that we talked about two years ago was the difference between school-based social work and community-based social work. Uh, they are very different, but we've grown those relationships so that those social workers are reaching out more frequently to our staff to say, can you help me with this, or I'd like to refer this family to you for X, Y, and Z. Uh so those relationships have been really nice. Uh, we also do continue to provide some funding to the schools. So we get still requests for materials around social emotional learning. Uh, we will fund books and certain tools within the classroom. Uh also, last year, put a lot of uh infrastructure into the social workers' offices for um even just say, uh kinetic sand art was a big thing last year. It's a real sensory tool, so you've got a kiddo coming in, talking with you, they can put their hands on something, they can play with something while they're, while they're working with you. Um, so we've done those things. And we are, so um this will be our first real April vacation that Erica's with us. And she's got some really good programming lined up for uh for the kids for that vacation.
Uh, if I could ask a question, um, the half-days with school kids going down, what does the social worker actually do that? Cause I'm, when I was here in the nineties, we were going downtown, I I it's not gonna change.
You're getting your Starbucks and yeah.
Yeah, well, we'd have Starbucks.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Uh, so the difference is, and there's a couple different avenues. You know, we've got Culture Arts and Recreation that does some programming. We've got the library that does some programming, and with us, it's just one more place for them to come and sit and hang out and do something fun, um something structured, something keeping them off of walking up and down hot metal um and off the van shell. So are we solving all the issues? No. But it's one more step to say, okay, we brought in fifteen kids for a reptile program. That's fifteen kids less that are hanging out the van shell or damaging playground equipment.
The the therapy uh referrals, are those identified at risk? Or are they referral, like they came to you with a need and so then you refer them out?
So it's a combination, it can be either self-referral from the, you know, the parent or the guardian. Um, several times it's referrals from the school's social workers to us for private therapy. Um, or it can be identified through the JRB process. Uh so a couple of different points that those come from.
So Simon, I have a couple questions, cause you know, we're looking at adding four positions and if we have to make a decision and if one of the new four is more important than one of the old four, which we don't usually go back and do, but just because of this two-year thing, we can look at this. Um, so the question I would have for you is, we already, we have two social workers today, you and Rachel, correct?
Yes, myself, Rachel, and Erica.
And Erica. Um, are you all, are you filled to capacity? If, are you, all three of you filled to capacity on work as social workers, regardless of whether it categorizes youth services, community, or other?
Yes, well, I would say most definitely myself and Rachel for sure. Uh, I think that there's still room to grow in this position. So we can continue to add to this position, add more programming now that we've gotten our feet wet, we use our understanding what we're doing, we've got a good base level for the programs that we're offering, now we are gonna continue to grow.
Uh but the programming, it sounds like if I look at this list, a lot of these are partnerships with the library or Parks and Rec. Or or educate, or the schools, or so, yeah, I just trying to understand the overall value to the community.
Yep.
Without what we do in the schools or in the other places that requires this position to be here. It was, it was when we did it at the time, we were in the middle of COVID, we were in the middle of COVID twenty, well, no, last year, right? Two years ago, so twenty-one, we were COVID, we, I think we had masks on, but I, I'm not sure, I I tried to re, I, no, we didn't have masks, I'm sorry. Um, so it, so we did, you know, it was put on us to really come back and really evaluate this. And I, you know, I, it's hard to, too hard to ask these questions. Um, but you know, some of my things was, you know, seeing some of the, the the social worker as the contact for registration for some programs um that were not necessarily youth services bureau programs, and that concerned me. Um, so, so that's why I'm saying, is the function only for this or is the function across your whole department?
So, and I just wanted to make sure that all of these that are listed here, unless it says that it's at SPL or that it was at Parks and Rec, they are in-house, so these were our, our programs that we've added that are new.
So the elementary social emotional learning is a social worker program?
Which one are you looking at?
On tw- two point five, two, five twenty-four, twenty-two hundred students. Cause that's like, I'm looking at the ones that have high, high usage to ask on those.
Okay, so that was, that's a grant where we made a grant of social emotional learning equipment to the schools. And then the others are programs. So like Cupcake Wars with SPL, that was at SPL. Um, but the others are, were here in Eno, not here, they're in Eno.
And then see, um, the sensory Santa, that's a D, A and D project. Like you guys sponsored that, correct, with support from the social services?
It's prim, a lot of the organization is with the staff. Um, A and D does sponsor it, um but it's primarily a function of the staff, just organizing the staff.
Okay, and then just, I'm just, I I'm just going through.
Yeah.
And then the family ski, ice skating, was that a specific skating?
That was a skating event at Culture Arts and Recreation.
Through, through social services?
No, through Culture Arts and Recreation.
Partner with the library.
Okay, so it's, so it's not, these are not just specific to.
A new role.
Yeah.
Right, just the, right, those couple are not specific to the new, but the others are specific happening at Eno, yes.
Okay, and then I just looked at those, cause they had the big numbers, the other numbers were smaller, that's the only reason I I pulled those out.
Um, I have to be honest, I'm struggling with this position and I generally wouldn't be in favor of cutting the position to add something new. But I think we're, the fact that we're looking at the year that we are, if there is something that's more important to town function, I guess where I struggle with this position, one, it was, the intention was in term to begin with, but it seems like there is just so much overlap. We have so many um offerings in our town in all different areas for babysitting, um class and crafts and so many things that um it's just hard to justify another avenue. And I struggle to believe that someone who wants to vandalize the, the.
Van shell.
The van shell is going to attend the reptile class at social services. Like, I just don't see that happening. But um also, you know, you have D I, DEI coming off your plate, Community for Carers, thank you, so does that free up space for your?
It doesn't, because we're still seeing all the other things that we see. When we took this position, you took it off my plate and off Rachel's plate. So it's gonna go back to being on our plate. Uh, so it won't be done like this, it'll go back to, we'll be just ferreting out the money to other departments to spend. Um, and other things have come onto my plate, such as recreating, restarting the Fair Ret Commission, which was, hasn't been active for like thirty years, and as soon as that starts up, there's going to be hearings. Um, and there's been other initiatives that I've now been a part of, so no, I wouldn't say I am actually working less. Um, we also, you know, not to go down the rabbit hole with my department, but I am managing a boatload of evictions that I've never done before. We're relocating clients due to severe hoarding issues. These are all really high-level case management things that are either done by myself or by the community social worker, so.
No, and I apologize, I didn't, it wasn't my intention, I'm sorry if I came across that, was not that you're working less. I was just curious if those coming off of your plate opened up some wiggle room for you. As to what was, by the way, I intended my question, so I apologize.
Hi.
I'd love to see just the list of the functions that are in in your department. I think there's obviously a lot of activities in the cross-pollination, I think is actually something to be encouraged. But I would love to just see the the breakdown that's that's specific there, I think it'd be really informative to showcase what you're doing, so, thank you. Thanks, Kristin.
Alright.
Thank you.
Well, I'll still be here in case anything else comes up, I'll try not to break anywhere, friends.
Okay, what is, wait, what is the amount of the salary?
Yeah, we don't, what is the salary, like what would the amount be?
What is the budget impact on this?
Eighty.
Seven seventy-seven.
Is that inclusive of um benefits and everything?
The average salary is about seventy-seven. It does not include your benefits, which is taken elsewhere, I don't.
One thirty?
It depends what plan she takes, I'm not sure.
Cause I know just like all the rest of the positions had the full, full package in there, so I'm trying to, if we, I wanna compare apples to apples.
Yeah, we can get it, we can get it, yeah. We'd say roughly a hundred in total, but we can get the specifics.
Um, are we all set with the physician section, staffing changes section?
It was just the new staff, right, we're gonna go under regular operating stuff now.
Um, well, I think, since the, would that be under the department head comments? Like going through each department item and then asking questions there?
True.
That's what I would, cause we have outside agency requests, is that how we wanna do that?
Yeah, but it's uh fairly brief, if you wanna move on to that.
For some people.
We'll knock that out next.
We need a, we need a break, I know. I'm just, I'm just asking, I'm.
Oh, I got it.
You got it?
Yeah.
Let's do it.
Alright. Um, so outside agency requests, um typically we release an application to, um it's eligible for nonprofits, not-for-profits, and um actually local government entities who serve Sims Barred residents. Um, so these requests have um typically been handled at the policy level with you all. Um, so what, the way we presented it in the town manager's budget is level funding the requests from the prior year. Um, with the exception of those that are based on a per capita charge, so slight adjustments there. So on the next slide, you'll see, um ones that have the little star next to them um did account for the, you know, minor increases due to per capita charges in the town manager's budget. And then the ones highlighted in yellow are essentially those that have requested an increase or they're a brand less from the current year. Um, so those would uh be the ones that we'd be looking for, um, your feedback on in terms of what direction you wanna go. So you've got the request in the first bolded column, and then you can see um change over the current year. And then the the right-hand column is what the budget reflects.
Do we wanna talk about the SBAAs since the SBAAs here and has been here, I believe, most of the day?
They're just enjoying this entire day.
So thinking, you know, because.
Made me feel better in case I had a problem, though.
We have, please, we have. We're covered.
Same as place you could be right now.
Right?
Is that, is, would that be, would that is the highest idea mo- amount up there? So, um, are we, are we just asking questions or?
However you'd like to do it, I mean, I could give you an overview of of uh where where we were uh from an administrative point of view in the review for additional funding, uh new funding uh in FY twenty-five from from SBAAs. Probably a quick, just a quick synopsis, obviously, uh their presentation at the tribe board, uh the back and forth uh through my office at your request. A number of questions were asked and all of those were answered. Uh, the funding request was two hundred and twenty-eight. Uh, and in my preliminary, I've I've put in a placeholder of two hundred. Um, you know, this along with a couple of other uh items that are under review in this budget cycle will require a uh contract or a memorandum of understanding that has not yet been negotiated uh and would need to be uh negotiated. So my proposal is uh that we fund them uh flat, uh you know, as as to last year. But you approve uh up to two hundred, uh you know, based on our ability to uh hammer out the details. I, and uh I think that's about all I had, unless there's uh any questions.
Well, I think we've been through this, we sat through the uh the double, the double board, the buy board. Uh, and we heard all the, the things that, so, um, you know, the way I'm looking at this is that it's a requirement to run, to keep that second ambulance running. Um, but but that if we continue this funding, there will be some heavy contract requirements from the SBAAs um that, you know, we're hearing from the public and that we would want from the board of finances, ask for some financial things. And um as far as where we stand on um reporting on the finances, which Amy would probably have to be, obviously would be involved in. Um, you know, there's a potential for FOIA requirements if we fund this much. That had come up at one point with the town attorney, I don't know where that stands, but I think we would revisit that. Um, if that is a need, if we are partially funding um the operations here. So I I don't, I I honestly don't know any other way around this problem right now, other than to fund it. Um, right now, we're funding it out of um operating, but we're looking at it as a one-year, one-year item. And I don't know if there's any better way to do that, but that was how it's presented here. So, um, that's where I am on it, I'd like to open it up to others.
I'll ju- I'll jump in, um, there has been a lot of discussion, so I don't know how much we'll actually get into to the specifics uh tonight. But you know, obviously, people might reach out to us in case they have specific concerns um regarding it. I I I would feel um, you know, horrible in a circumstance where uh we at this time didn't provide the funding necessary to ensure that coverage. Um, and none of us would wanna be uh the person making that call, uh when mutual aid couldn't be there or um there was another call being made and and we could have had an opportunity to make uh some provision to ensure that that coverage is there. But we know that there are some long-term um issues that need to be addressed that won't be addressed in this MOU process. And so I look forward to continuing to, um, you know, um, that continuing partnership uh to identify and alleviate those. Um, and I appreciate um SBAA sharing some information on how they're working on things like uh um uh collection rates and their process and receivables and that. And I, and I got some information from Chris Kelly as well, which I appreciated, um, the due diligence and trying to partner with the town. I also, from um my understanding, and I hope that this uh bears through in the MOA process or MOU or uh whatever vehicle be contrived be between the town and and SBAA, uh that um they are in a different place as, insofar as information sharing, and so I look forward to that. Um, that we establish a period of performance with this when we uh agree to this funding and it, um, and that agreement gets signed, uh what the scope of work and the expectations would be, um, what the reporting metrics would be that protect both of us. Um, so that we have an understanding of what um, of what the requirements and our expectations would be, but they're able to also report out those and that they're meeting them, uh which is a benefit to SBAA as well and ultimately to the benefit of the town. Uh, but I'd also offer that even if we commit to this whole funding and we come to the MOU in the end, uh that we work on a distribution or a a schedule of payments uh that would go out to SVA as opposed to a single lump sum. And we put them out into quarterly or or some otherwise as we're meeting the metrics, you know, over the year. And I have uh full faith that uh with this board, the SVA board and uh the guidance of our town manager, that we can come to a final agreement. Uh, so I have no problem with the um funding level that was proposed from the town manager at this point and um, and uh will be supporting it.
I have a question, um, just because, um, so I know. I have a question, um, just because, um, so I know two twenty eight was requested, um, and tw- two hundred was proposed. Question for SVAA is, how critical is that twenty eight thousand shortfall, and how, if we fund only two hundred, how is that going to be made up? What is, where where is that falling, and how is that, what is the impact?
So the two twenty eight is our best estimate, uh based on what we collect on average per call and what we expect call volume to be. You know, following uh two thousand twenty three, when we had met with the town and and kept the ambulance going, um, we ultimately received the funding of a hundred and fifty thousand for the town's fiscal twenty three, twenty four year, um, which doesn't line up with ours, and was basically told, you know, that first six months of twenty three, we kept the ambulance going. We really did spend down our resources to do that. There was a cost to it, it was real. So, in the same manner, if we get, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand or two hundred thousand, our best estimate is is it's two hundred and twenty eight thousand, and there's gonna be some play around that depending on the calls, but at some point, the ambulance would have to come off the road, there'd be no cash to put it on the road.
So if we, if it, you'd be twenty eight thousand dollars short, and we'd be having no ambulance out?
Yeah, I mean, could we find a plug, um, I don't know what it is now, you know, but, you know, really, at the end of the day, there's a cost to the preparedness of putting the ambulance on the road, you know, we we are, you know, and and some of the talk has been around, well, how, you know, are you an ongoing entity? How do you get there? And, you know, historically, the way things work, we didn't have to come to the town. We had our model of one ambulance, we build, we did uh collection, and we got the quests, and we were able to keep funding on that. Back in two thousand fourteen, we started, um, you know, looking at call volumes and thinking it made sense to put a second rig on the road, and we were paying for that. Uh, and you, putting it on when we thought call volumes were high, and as our existing staff allowed for. And that's really when we began spending down our resources. In two thousand seventeen, the town did give us some money for that. Uh, in two thousand eighteen, they elected not to, and you know, finally, at the end of two thousand twenty two, uh with the growth in town, we just really felt it compelling that you you should have this second rig running during, at least during the daytime. Um, you know, and that's kinda where we are at now, so, um, you know, a majority of the funding is for that twelve hours, is for a paramedic and an EMT to be on that rig. Right now, it's getting, you know, maybe a call or two a day, which does not come anywhere near to covering that expense, and that's, you know, that's what we're asking the town for, is to 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 cover that that gap. What we do think is gonna happen and has been going on is, as I mentioned, call volumes are steadily increasing, as that happens, you know, we already have the full expense on, the revenue will will climb, and we think, you know, somewhere around two thousand twenty seven, two thousand twenty eight, uh, you know, that the revenue will cover ultimately the expense of that second unit. But until then, uh again, we've really, you know, we felt it was an important enough um need for the town to to spend into our own resources to try and keep that on the road as as much as we could, but that's, you know, that's that has led to our resources being uh diminished.
Yeah, cause I just, I'm, you know, I wanna know what the impact of the town is, if if it's not fully funded, and it's only partially funded.
Yeah, so at some point, we'd have to cut back hours or or staff it differently, you know, but it wouldn't be, you know, again, that is our best guess of what it's gonna cost.
Right, okay. Right.
With call volume going up, I mean, we've already seen improvement with revenue coming in, just cause it, cause it keeps going, it's gonna naturally just go that way anyway.
But yeah.
So that's why our request kinda goes down over the years, but um.
Yeah, and I I guess what I, you know, what, so one of the things I looked at is just, you know, we we base the forecast on how call volumes have been going, and if I look at the standard deviation of what that is, right, you know, so up or down one standard deviation, and and then look at what we'd expect the billing is, in any year, that could be plus or minus eighty thousand, so if you give us two hundred, we, that might do it, but conversely, if things went the other way, it might fall well short.
So it's it's not even a matter of the two twenty eight, cause the two twenty eight could also fall short.
Yeah, the two, yeah, well, it's a fairly specific number, it's it's based on, you know, it's our our best forecast, yeah.
Yeah, okay. That's nice. Thank you.
I I I'm gonna, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna pick one, I guess, on the the Simsbury Historical Society asked for sixty thousand dollars, I agree with the 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 funding there, um, the the money was being asked for, um, the three fiftieth to go to the historical society. And what I've gone to a couple of steering, well, meetings trying to get that project off the ground. Um, it is coming down from an organization at the state level that's asking that multiple organizations in the community, along with the municipality partner in on that, and we kinda feel that we didn't wanna manage the project from the municipality level, like let um another group um organize it and create a steering committee. So I don't think we'd wanna give sixty thousand dollars to the historical society to manage that funding for this project. But one thing I will do, and when we get back to CNR, is potentially unpropose um a small line item for two years of twenty five hundred dollars a year. I don't know if that's how we would do it, to kind of have money in reserves or aside in case they need the town to participate, whether it's Parks and Rec, maybe it goes under Parks and Rec. So you guys can think about where we would put something like that, cause it's only for a short period of time to have them some resources available if the town needs to participate. And and as a FYI, they're gonna be looking for a member of the board of selectmen to be on their steering committee. So, I think Kevin, that's something.
I have, um.
Thank you, Madam First.
On the historical side.
So do you like history?
Yeah.
I also, uh, in looking in that that request, um, I agree, I think we do need something to support the um, the initiative for the celebration twenty twenty six, but um, I was concerned with it falling under here, one, the committee has not been formed yet, and thirty thousand of it is to repair the meeting house, which I don't necessarily think that that would be um on the plan for the event. Uh, so I think that as a town, we should show some support for the event, but um I think that we do need to see a plan, what that plan is and what it entails, and uh my concern with this request is, uh, once they form their s- steering committee, um, if we were to say we provided this one to the historical society, and the meeting house uh was resided, and the windows were redone, and and then we see a plan in place that needs assistance with the actual event, it just would concern me, I think it's just a little too early to put that kind of on the side. But we should, I'm happy to put a line, I have something in good faith.
We'll work on it.
Just to add to your two, didn't we just fund, um, they're building another building on their property? And we just waived a permit fee for them, so they're built, they're expanding their building, but yet they're not fixing the current structures, is that right?
Yeah, I mean, I I'm not really, um,
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I.
That's not your point, but.
Yeah, this isn't really my point, it's just, yes, the request was for, was for the uh
I just, I, I was, I was just adding that.
this money for the event, but when they got into the nitty gritty of where it was going, the meeting house thing just
Yeah.
seemed like it was a little bit of a stretch, um, to be in spirit for the event.
Okay, agreed.
What do we do for the town three fiftieth?
Covid.
Oh, that was, uh, we had a whole committee for that, Tom.
We got covid.
You mean the three fiftieth, and the three fifty first, and the three fifty seventh?
Yeah.
The never ending anniversary.
There was a seed money, there was an appropriation of, I think, eighteen thousand five hundred for seed money for that, and then they went out and fundraised
Oh. Are they?
up for the balance.
And and they do say they're gonna do grant, there's grants out there and stuff like that, but they just wanna be able to look to the town to help if there's a town participating for that, um, that we would be responsible for. Um, so, a- any comments on any other items on here?
Um, I have a couple.
Okay.
Um, so, the da-da-da-da-da, the Chamber of Commerce. So, they're looking for. He's gone?
He was here, he was here.
He left, it was a long time.
Never he's gone.
He was here this morning.
He was here all morning, um,
Just my.
because I'm looking at what they're they're asking for, and the, I I do understand where your recommendation is, I'm kind of sort of supporting your recommendation of not the additional thirty five hundred dollars, unless anybody, and and if everybody's in agreement, then I can just not talk. Um, like if somebody wants to put in the thirty five hundred, I just found what they were looking for thirty five hundred dollar increase for wasn't necessarily proven on us to to pay for, so.
I agree with that, but I have more comments on the chamber, just.
I do too.
So, I don't need to, how would someone else say them?
Yeah.
It's just a chamber.
Well, i- in the past, the chamber provided our our tourism center, um, and in the past, it was, no offense, but the Simsbury Chamber of Commerce, now it's the Granby Simsbury Chamber of Commerce.
Right. Right.
That tourism center is gone, and that's sort of what the seventy five hundred was moving for.
Right.
And I don't, to be frank, I almost wish where he was here, so I could say his piece. I don't understand why there's an increase when there's less services coming in.
Directly.
It should be a reduction. Also, I found some nuances, the town of Simsbury, of course, is a member of the Chamber of Commerce. There there's a lack of consistency, if it's gonna be the Granby Simsbury Chamber of Commerce, I think there should be some consistency between the two towns. The town of Granby isn't even a member of the Simsbury Chamber of Commerce. We are, I believe we pay eight hundred and twenty five dollars for that. Um, I'm not disputing that, but we already have that little crumb out there. And with the tourism aspect being removed, with the exception of bringing circulars, it's such a
Shine on.
good husband.
Oh, my goodness.
Shine on.
It's a part-time position.
Thank you.
He's the delivery guy.
Point five FTE.
He always gets credit in the program.
Um, anyways, my point is, I actually think the seventy five hundred is a little too high for what we're getting. At this point, even self admittedly, if I remember reading through it, all they're doing is restocking pamphlets at the local hotels, and seventy five hundred seems a little rich for that. Um, so I just, you know, the the increase to me is, you're giving us less, there's no way I would be behind giving them more. And my second thing is, with the reduction, and also the splitting between Granby and Simsbury, I'd wanna know what Granby's putting in, and I don't mind matching, but I don't feel we should be supporting literally the Granby Simsbury Chamber of Commerce, and Granby's just free riding and getting the headline.
Well, and honestly, I feel like the programming that they're doing isn't to par what Simsbury used to do, like if you go to that Granby, they, the event that they do in the fall now that used to be at the Meadows,
Yeah.
it it hasn't been well attended, like it's not.
Yeah, no, it's not the same.
It's not the same, and and I don't think we're getting as a town value for it, and first of all, it's in Granby, and why don't we switch it every year, but I don't feel like we're getting value from that, that fall event, whatever it is now.
Not the citizens of our town, which is whose money we're spending.
Right.
So, and.
Also, the tourism, so with them distributing tourism pamphlets and, um, in that sort of thing around, um, in our hotels and in different, uh, the libraries, stocking them in different places. Um, are we also, is this paying for Granby's pamphlets and tourism information?
In the past, they've.
It's a fair assumption.
It it, they have said, we've asked, I think we asked this question last year, because we asked that, I think last year was the first year that they were Granby Simsbury, I don't remember. Um, but I know that we asked if they were getting funding from Granby, and last year they were not. So, we're giving seventy five hundred, we we were told Granby was not contributing, that would be something I would wanna know, is Granby matching the seventy five hundred? I believe they said that they are dedicated to the Simsbury tourism stuff, but this is a question, do they print these brochures, or do we print all this stuff? Like, are they printing?
We don't, we don't.
Okay, so, so it's just putting them in the library or in a hotel?
Unless they reprint them, now that they all say Granby Simsbury, because they couldn't say Simsbury Chamber of Commerce anymore, so they had to reprint all their pamphlets. And that may have been what the funding was from last year, but again, to your point, we shouldn't be funding the entire lot of it.
Additionally, and I've I've asked this question before, so, we have a tourist map that the Flowerbridge Association has made. Um, the Main Street Partnership has their initiatives with tourism and a brochure pamphlet that we have funded. Um, the chamber has, and like, how many maps of Simsbury do we need?
The Aging and Disability Commission did a pamphlet, but we funded it.
That's right.
Take your paper.
Did it wrong.
We also have a walking audio tour.
We do?
The historic Simsbury, oh yeah.
Do you also?
And then Kevin's gonna give you a tour.
I I think, so I think that they they closed the office, right, cause there was a change in its usage, and I think that, um,
Yeah.
Yeah.
many people know that the the walk-in rates were not maybe as advertised.
Yes.
Um, and so that's a, an issue. So I'll actually say I applaud them for not wasting those resources. So, um, that's good, and um, I think that there's a a pretty small team there uh right now at the at the chamber, and probably in an inflection point in trying to rebuild and serve, you know, both communities, where, you know, we do share some economic, um, you know, exchanges here. I live on the north end of town, so I'm almost in Granby. Um, and uh, and so I appreciate, you know, that partnership, even though some of our economic center is on the western Simsbury side, Cantonade on it, and and all that. My understanding with the hotels and and all that is that business guests who might come to the community, um, uh, might be able to benefit from seeing the business opportunities that exist here. And so that that's how it's been um sort of conveyed to me. Uh, I don't know what the return or the value is uh on that, I'm just not, you know, read up or or smart enough on that, and I don't know how, um, you know, a new business, um, person or an entrepreneur is is looking at the community, and whether or not that's the first point or interaction that they're gonna get, you know, for here. Um, I don't uh have um a complaint about the chamber, in insofar as this board. Um, I do think that uh we wanna be aware of and control our spending. Um, but I also know that for us, and we've looked at the numbers there, the impact on our overall budget and the impact to the average taxpayer for this request versus what the impact would likely mean uh for the chamber. So that would be my only uh reaction and caution to our conversation about that funding today, is especially if they are making the right steps, and are working, you know, hard to be a partner with us in our efforts for economic development. This funding um may still be useful, and it's incumbent on us to continue that that partnership with them. But I um, I'll just say that I um don't do a lot of business directly with the Simsbury Chamber, I've just had, um, you know, my work has taken me elsewhere. Um, so I'd rely on others that maybe have had more direct and regular dealings with them, insofar as the level of support. It's not uncommon for a town to both be a member, and so I would uh throw that to our peers, uh elected leaders, and and I think Mark has a new friend uh next door with who worked with the new town manager over there, and and get them to pony up as well. Um, if we think that this is an opportunity that benefits the region uh as well, so that's my only thought.
I agree with you, because I think it should be a shared cost, if, like, if they want seventy five hundred dollars, then we split the cost between Simsbury and Granby, it shouldn't just be.
At very least be a member.
Correct, very, you're right.
Yeah, I agree, I mean, I'm not necessarily looking to decrease that seventy five hundred this time, but I think they, the chamber needs to be messaged that that over the next year, they need to think about how we are contributing as two towns into, as one unit on this, and and that we don't wanna continue with no funding from Granby and all funding from us.
Well, it's like we do, like we have for the police and SVAA and and the PAC, we should be looking for numbers for them, and what, you know, what is Granby putting in? Where where are these dollars being spent? I see they, you know, what they're bringing in in membership dues and global sponsors, commu- community events, what they're bringing in. But what what is our money paying for? I wanna know where is that money going? If it's not going to rent space anymore, if it's not running to, if it's going to brochures, but what exactly is that money funding? They they kind of told us what the increase would be spent on, but they're not telling us what the entire ask is spent on, so I'd like an accounting of if we're gonna fund this, what are we funding? And what is the other, you know, what is Granby contributing as well? Like, like a full accounting of that.
So what I'm hearing, if I've got this right, is is the is the proposal is to flat fund the seventy five hundred, and then maybe invite them to a, to do a presentation in front of your board relative to.
Where the money's going?
Where the money's going.
I I know I speak for myself, but I'm not for flat funding. I see a reduction, and I see the duality with, we have a MOU coming up with Simsbury Main Street, who also has our website. The Chamber of Commerce, not to speak out, but I'm a business member as well as a a business community person. It's a self-proclaimed, membership-driven organization. It's not building commerce in Simsbury, which is a byproduct. Um, but rebuilding their website, which is solely for members, does not seem like the prerogative of the town, unless every business in town will be. Um, but rebuilding their website, which is solely for members, does not seem like the prerogative of the town unless every business in town will be on that website. It just seems like they've got conflicting uh goals, you know, either you're all in with Simsbury, or you're all in with Simsbury and Granby, or you're all in with a membership-driven organization. But you can't be all three. So, until they either commit to us in some tangible fashion of what we get for a return on our investment, I can't see giving them seventy-five hundred dollars. I totally see being a member, I totally see matching Granby. But until the ante is met, I think seventy-five hundred dollars, I know it's nickels and dimes compared to the town budget.
No, yeah.
But I don't see a return on it, not when we're scraping for so many things. Um, and I'm not against the Chamber, if they can bring something tangible.
That's right, when I said, like, if I wanna know what we're spending it on.
Then I'm I'm fine with it.
Right.
But it's gotta be tangible and fifty percent of that tangible value, because we're now splitting the Chamber.
Right. I wanna know exactly, I don't feel comfortable, again, I know it's peanuts in comparison to the overall budget, but I don't wanna spend seventy-five hundred dollars just because we've historically given them seventy-five hundred dollars, but I have no idea what it's paying for. Where we've asked for accounting accountability from all these other organizations, if, but but their funding needs maybe be more. So if we're funding like the hundred percent of their request, or we're not because, but I don't know what I'm spending it on.
So, I.
I don't know.
So I I know, you know, I I I came in thinking, oh, I'm gonna reduce that, um, and I I hear what Steve's saying, and I kind of agree. And I guess maybe we reduce it, but with a caveat that they've gotta, there's gotta be some economic development. Outcome other than just putting pamphlets in the library and at the hotels.
And are all Simsbury businesses in those pamphlets, or are those pamphlets solely member driven?
Right.
That's a good question.
Right, because when I, you know, when we've attended Chamber events, I've attended Chamber events outside of this, and I have for years for other reasons, but they're very, um. Uh, I I mean, yes, community events are open to the public, but otherwise, they're they're like monthly events are kind of homogeneous. And, um.
What's my, is that milk?
All together.
You know, it's it's, um, the the again, to your point, there, where is that uh conversation about economic development for Simsbury within that kind of Chamber meeting? Is that's my point, is homogeneous meetings, they get together, they have coffee, it's the same people, it's, you know, um.
Yeah.
So, I I would like to see some some different goals from them that is gonna benefit the town as well.
So, do we, are are do are we saying, well, I don't know if I had to say this now, we wanna keep, reduce, or abolish the the fees that are there, A. And I, yes, it is pennies, we keep saying that, but it's taxpayers' pennies, it's not our money.
It's money.
So, when our taxpayers want us to spend the money on the Chamber.
And we have.
Um, we also have to look at, are we gonna burn any relationships by doing that, that's another, you know, downside we don't wanna do. Um, but, um, you know, I'm open to, I think I'm open to all three, whoever has the best argument here.
So, I'll I'll offer one one thought, right, but so when we approve this budget, um, you know, when it gets through the whole process, because our colleagues over here will get a sense to look at it as well. Um, we're committing to a certain amount, uh, but that doesn't necessarily require us to spend it, uh, you know. And so it could allow us the opportunity to have these clarifying conversations and set some parameters on what the expectations are. If it's printing and it's including all businesses or representing the entire town, or whatever it is that are the pressure points for us. Because we are at a um shorter timeframe to solve all these problems. And what um probably the Chamber has built its own budget, you know, around, um, in anticipation of some revenue or 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 some some funding. And and I don't know that the uh bridges would be burned, or the relationships would be, you know, fully tarnished or whatever, but it certainly wouldn't be a great position or whatever to be in. Because when we make this decision now on this budget, it will be for the rest of that budget year, right? And so we we don't wanna come back again and modify a budget just because we didn't make the decision now. So, um, I I don't have a problem, like I said, with the amount that the town manager uh proposed, uh, because it was level funding, we we sort of could anticipate this. Um, and uh with all the other priorities and things that we have, this seems to fit for me, uh, in supporting one of our primary goals is on economic development. Um, managing to that and where we're sending those resources and ensuring that we're getting the value for that is still our job after we approve the expenditure. But I don't know that cutting it is necessarily gonna solve the problem for us. So, for instance, on on Main Street, and you know, I've had some good conversations, we don't have any, you know, direct problems or whatever there, but, you know, we should be seeing the annual report was part of the M O U. And I don't know that the town manager's office, you know, you know, got that, does that mean that they're not doing good things? No, um, but it does mean that probably there's a good closer relationship that that could be established there, I think, with this board and with the town manager's office. So I look forward to seeing all of those and the other entities that we might be supporting that are supporting our goals.
I'll I'll do just one last one, with all due respect to Kevin, we've had a reduction in what we're getting. So, level funding implies level servicing, and we we don't have the the tourism center anymore.
Okay.
So.
That's fair.
You know, it it just one last piece and I'm I'm done.
So are you saying, do you wanna cut it, do you wanna cut?
I wanna cut it.
You wanna cut it currently?
I think we should cut it in half and look to Granby to give them the other half.
Okay, so let's, I think that's a reason, I I would do that.
I I agree with that.
I'm more with Kevin on the level, and then have them come back and say, justify it. Because I don't know enough about what they do to say that we're not getting the seventy-five hundred, because they probably their budget's much larger than seventy-five hundred, so they're doing something. So it's, I'd rather just know what they're doing and justify it than to cut it.
Well, so what you're saying is we can, we can keep it at level, but again, what Kevin was saying is, but not necessarily fund full level. If we come back and they say, well, we're doing this and this and this, and Granby isn't, then we'll say, fine, we budgeted for that, but we're only gonna give you half.
Or are we saying four, are we saying the four of us wanna reduce it to half and move that forward?
Can I offer a a suggestion, it's it's uh from my New York background, but uh just move it to contingency, take it off this line, but put the seventy-five, I'll put whatever amount in contingency.
Yeah.
And we'd have to come back to move it, and, you know, we get them in here and and we do exactly what you're you all want us to do. And I agree with both arguments, I don't think you take a, send a message today to 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 cut.
Right, too.
But I agree with Stephen, the whole Granby thing doesn't sit well with me either. As a solution, I think you're okay with moving it to contingency and we'll be back with the details, then it's not a cut, you can't disperse it until we. Until we've gotten some answers, which should be, you know, discussed in open session, I would think publicly.
Okay, that's fine.
Is that okay?
Okay, it solves the approach.
Very solution.
Solves the problem for today.
Discuss it a little further.
Then somebody better bring me coffee.
I know.
Uh, Jonathan, wait, do we have orders?
No.
Send Jonathan.
Jonathan has something else here.
Um.
I do, um.
Yeah, go ahead, because I do too.
I have something on S C M.
Me too.
Okay, yeah, I'm, the the ten thousand, um, I'm in support of.
Let's go ahead, Heather.
I just, the the fifty thousand that they had in there was for the Eno bathroom, but seeing that that's a town.
Yeah.
Property, shouldn't that be a town item if it comes up? And what is the condition of the bathroom, I mean, how did that end up as an S C M request?
Yeah.
Oh, that's terrible. I don't know.
I'm not sure how this became an S C M.
I I have a question.
I don't know.
Totally don't have the answer to that one, Ed.
I'm with something, I. Is it something that we should add at some point to our?
Yeah.
I I think it's like all things, it's a it's it's a dated restroom facility, it's a very small group that use it, but then it also gets used. Um, at times when um there's performances at Eno by the cast. Um, so again, it I'm gonna put it in the long list of things that in our buildings we would like to get.
But if we, i- if they're asking for, or would they be constructing their bathroom, or would we be constructing?
I I think this is, this is one of these, it's a very slippery slope.
So it's kinda.
They assisted us in the renovation work when when they had their new studio set. But the day-to-day construction, the day-to-day work, everything ran through the town, it's Simsbury, it's our building, it's our property, we have processes.
Hmm.
They can help, but in in the end, we have to hold all the contracts and we have to set the standards.
So really, it shouldn't have been in there in the first place?
No, and actually, it's kinda funny, it's the first I've seen.
Hey, Tom, you wanna go build that bathroom?
Hey. Let me get my tools.
That was my same question, Heather, so.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, I think we uh can move.
I I have a question, um, the uh Interville House didn't make it in. Um, I when the when they came in, gave us the presentation, I found it to be, um, you know, very.
It's in there, it's in there, it's in there. It's in there.
Good? Okay, good, I thought I thought it's in there, I read the one call.
It says Hartford Interlins.
Sorry, sorry, my bad.
And that we, that that got bumped up, each, I think the last two years, it keeps, it's gotten bumped up to five, it was it was lower. Um, so I thought that's, be happy to keep that there. We're.
Were there any other requests for outside agency?
Uh, I'd like to make a request for the um Simsbury A B C House.
Sure.
They had submitted a request, but they um got it in too late. Um, this is the fiftieth anniversary of the Simsbury A B C House, um, been here, um, giving kids an opportunity to uh advance themselves. It helps the community, um, most of the kids there have above a three, 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 four, um, one kid's got a four, two right now. Um, they participate in school events, um, it helps our D I information, because uh, you know, it brings in diversity into our town. Um, and they have their hundred fiftieth anniversary, that's gonna bring in somewhere seventy, fifty-plus people in the town for this event, it's a three-day event. And it could be a nice thing to help them, they never come to us for for money before, so I'd like to put it out there for consideration.
Yeah, I would, I'll weigh in, and I I will just go on record as saying, I'm an A B C House mom, I was one from two thousand and four to two thousand eight. I had Malik Bryant, Malika Malik spent a lot of time at my house, they became hockey fans, I'm hoping that they're coming up for this event. Um, and I plan to go to the dinner. Um, I I, this came in late, so I pushed back um to the town manager, because it came in after the application due date of June, January twelfth. And I stand by that in the fact that we don't know if anybody else wanted to apply at that point, and that's what the form said. So I will, I'm, I know, I know government is red tape, but, you know, that's just fairness to people that are out there. Um, I also read the details of the event, and yes, there will be bringing people to town, and that's a nice thing, but it is to pay for a party for a nonprofit organization. So does that say, you know, anybody else can come to us and ask to fund, you know, to spread, so whatever, your group, um, and then, um.
Turn it to a party.
The other, the other thing is, the event is, this, the event is in twenty-three, twenty-four, this, we're funding twenty-four, twenty-five. So those are my comments, and I know it may not sound like, you know, a nice comment, Curtis, um, but that's just where I am on this to to not add it. But if people wanna add it and and wrote on it, that's up to them.
I I'll be honest, I I side with Wendy, although I love A B C House and support them immensely, I do feel the platform like last year.
Uh, no.
Well, that was. Regardless, the um, the 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 actual date of being January twelfth and the request coming almost two months later. Um, does alienate anyone else that wanted to jump on it, does also set a precedent, um, that we're willing to have parties for all the five oh one Cs in town. Which, albeit, I I would love to participate in some manner to of the celebration, um, but I I don't think it's the town's priority. More sure to be a, um, you know, setting a precedent for others.
I agree with all the same reasons, and I think it's a great organization.
Yeah. I I do too, I mean, two of Sarah's best friends to this day are from A B C House, Malika Tatum and her associate Salsedo, and she, you know, they spent a lot of time at my house. I volunteer there a lot, I know the cook, I think we can do, uh, I do.
I know the cook.
I know the cook, um, oh, she's Carter's friend's mom, anyway.
Okay.
Um, the uh, I think there's ways to, as I, as Wendy said, to to honor them, make proclamations, you know, have.
Mm.
Uh, ha- have something directly from the Board of Selectmen, um.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, I I think there's ways, um, we can, we can uh encourage people to attend and to support and to, uh, you know. Make support to the A B C House individually.
And and I would just say, if there's a need next year for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, if they have things that they need, I know that they're high school students, so I don't know what kind of relationship there is with the with the education, the Board of Ed. If they give them any funding, probably not, um, but if there's any town partnership or something like that, you know, maybe come back in twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yeah.
For, um, you know, could take a shot at the outside agency request.
Right.
Um, for something that, that does.
Right, if, you know, exactly, if they, there's something that needs renovated with the house or something, you know.
Mm, yeah.
This would be shocking for Wendy, because I'm the rule follower, but I have no problem with the outside the window, I think it's an arbitrary date, I think it's helpful to staff to have the date, um, you know, on there. Um, and I was happy to support the the request for discussion, which which we've just had, um, you know, tough budget year and and everything else notwithstanding. And considering it was a a one-year request and for a very specific event and and something that, um, I think is one of the, um, points of light and unique things about our our community. Not that there aren't other A B C Houses, but that ours is so well-run and so successful, and we've had some great personal relationships there, I thought it was worthy for uh for discussion. So, um, uh, sounds like there might not be room in this year's budget, but I don't think it's inappropriate to discuss it.
Okay.
Would you support funding it?
Okay, thank you. Well, we're.
But I I would be happy to talk a little bit more about it, especially regarding the comment on the party and and everything else. Um, but I think that there are other times when the community has supported event-based programming, and this is an event that's worthy of the community being involved. And so is there some um set aside or something that uh the town could say it ha- it bears, you know, um, some responsibility in supporting? This is one I'd be willing to have a conversation on, uh, considering the circumstance. So, yeah, would we be involved in um, um, the the nation's anniversary in a couple of years, will we have a set aside for uh celebrating that from the town? I think that we probably will, and the D A R comes to us, we probably will receive them with open arms. And, um, considering this request from, you know, that came from the A B C House to celebrate a fiftieth anniversary for a pretty unique program, I think is is certainly in order, even if we don't have the uh capacity to support it.
So, that's a concern I have with supporting it is that, um, it it doesn't fall within the, we're having a budget conversation for next year's budget, and it doesn't fall within that budget.
Yeah.
Year.
Yeah.
So, year, so how do we? How do we have that as a discussion piece for this budget, should it be, I mean, we will be putting on an agenda, I don't, I don't know if that's appropriate or something else, but I just.
Creative accounting.
Yeah, but I just, I just think to discuss it in a next year's budget conversation is what I'm finding odd.
Good, how much does they ask?
It's five.
Five?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I I I just, I don't think it's appropriate in this realm, if that that's where I'm at. Um, if if we still stand with the four of us that don't, unless someone's changing their mind and wants to include it. I'm standing with not including it in the outside agency funding for this budget.
But legally, can.
No, it's not.
I mean, legally, can you fund something in this budget that's for, that's not for this budget?
Sure. Well, it would be.
When is the date of the, when is the date of the celebration?
It's a celebration.
It's in April.
It's in April, so we wouldn't be a fiscal year yet.
Right, then no.
They just wouldn't get the money till July.
Then no, you can't.
Okay, so.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't get the money till July one.
Yeah, they'd have to front the money, and then we would essentially reimburse them.
All right, um, any other outside agency funding items to discuss? Okay. We wanna take a five-minute break since it's very good, and then we can hear from the department heads who have been here all day.
Sure.